I'd like to welcome everybody to the, tonight's public hearing. But before we get started, please turn off your cellphone or any other electronic devices to avoid any interruptions. If anyone present is planning on presenting testimony, please sign the signup sheet at the back and make it legible so I can read it. Okay? And if anyone who wants an opportunity to speak, you'll have the time to do so. Please step up to the podium and when it's your turn and make sure you clearly identify yourself for the record before you begin your testimony. We request that you please keep your testimony focused on the relevant issues and facts for each application. For this application, there's only one tonight. Please remember these hearings are to allow for members of the public to speak on related issues to land use, not to air grievances about each other or your neighbors. We will not tolerate or allow testimony that is hateful in nature and will stop your testimony if it delves into a statement on other people's character. So, where are, looks like we have a few chairs left. It's, it is, today is Wednesday, the 30th day of July, the time is 6:00 PM, the time set for this public hearing. All three commissioners are present. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No, sir.
Okay. No changes to the agenda, we'll delve right into it. I will open the public hearing on application 2024-02581ZOA, Ada County Development Services. We will first listen, have our staff give us a report, and I think this will be handled a little differently because we normally have a organization or a person that's opposed, but this time it seems that we have room, a room full of people that are either opposed or in favor. So then we'll start calling your name up for, for testimony. We'll limit your testimony to three minutes and, because we do want to get, get through as many as we possibly can. All right? So, we'll turn it over to Leon, he'll give us an introduction. Thank you, Leon.
All right. Thank you, Chairman Commissioners. So the item before you is the zoning code rewrite. Ada County Development Services is serving as the applicant in this situation. So to begin, there's a timeline as to how, how long we've been working at this. From the spring through the fall of 2020, we initiated the project. That was some initial public outreach, some internal assessments of our current zoning code, and identifying focus groups and subject matter experts to help us with the process. From fall of 2020 to spring of 2022, we had subject matter expert meetings. There was a Citizens Advisory Committee that we formed and called together multiple times. We also met with the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Board on routine updates as to progress being made on the project. From the fall of 2021 to the spring of 2022, we started the initial draft of the project, working with a consultant who ended their contract in, I believe, 2023. From spring of 2022, or in the spring of 2022, we had our open houses on the initial draft of the meeting. Those were pretty lightly attended, but we did get some feedback that we used to update the zoning code. And then from the summer of 2022 to the fall of 2024, we worked with our legal team to prepare the ordinance and make minor revisions. Winter of late 2024 to the summer of 2025, we held a second round of open houses and public hearings for adoption. Those second round of open houses were much more attended, and they were asked or directed by our P&amp;Z to be held. We held three of them, one in southwest Boise at the Lake Hazel Library, one here at the courthouse, and one out at the Kuna Library. In terms of what's new in the code, it's kind of a high level, but we really didn't change a lot of material in the code. I mean, there are clearly some items that were changed, and I think that's why a lot of folks are here tonight. But in reality, most of this was just a reorganization and rewrite to make it more user-friendly for the public. You know, as any code, it's kind of been cobbled together over the years with multiple amendments, and so I think it was roughly about 25 years ago that we went through a pretty major rewrite, and we just figured it was time to try to clean all that up. So that was the first, first item in terms of what's new. We also updated zoning districts to be more cohesive with our comp plan and current land uses. We worked to refine procedures and administration to be more efficient and user-friendly. We revised a number of land use regulations for things like accessory uses, housing, solar facilities, and more, and we introduced some new standards for water efficiency and environmental conservation. I'll dig into a little, each of these a little bit more in the following slides. So in terms of being reorganized and rewritten, as I mentioned, 2000 was the last major rewrite. Top priority there was to streamline, simplify, modernize, and revise so that the average community member could pick it up and make sense of, of what it required and what they could do with their property. Some of the key stuff there was updates to some really aged graphics that we had in the code, as well as just really, again, trying to make this a lot easier for folks to use. In terms of updating the zoning districts, we consolidated or removed a number of unused zoning districts that none of the properties in our county had, had had that zoning for a long time, so really no need to continue making use of those, so we cleaned that out of the code. We created a consolidated table of allowed uses, whereas before we had had a table of allowed uses in each zoning district. Now we have just one major consolidated table, which hopefully makes it a little easier for people to understand, you know, what's the use, what's the zone, what can I do with it, as well as references to any specific use standards. We worked to encourage additional housing in different zoning districts, I'll talk about that a little bit more later, and some of the changes we made on that front. We also worked to allow some limited commercial uses in the R12 and R20 districts, which are higher density, you know, usually we'll see multifamily housing in those districts. There was a big push to try to be more agriculturally friendly, so we incorporated some uses that exist in our code today into more zoning districts to try to achieve that, and then we created a standalone section for accessory and temporary uses. In terms of the procedures and administration, we created a few new options and revamped some of the older ones. So we have something called alternative compliance now, which will be an administrative-level application for processing minor deviations to dimensional standards, whereas all variances come to the Board today. This would allow for the Director to make small-level changes to reductions in those dimensional standards, or changes to those dimensional standards if, again, under a certain threshold. We also established a parcel consolidation process. The county's full of a lot of old remnant parcels that were created in a variety of ways, and so this is a new process that allows people to administratively combine those and, and create more compliant parcels through a record of survey process. And I can pause if you guys need some time to...
No, go ahead.
Okay. We also came up with a combined preliminary and final plat process, again, in an effort to kind of expedite some things that were already happening rather quickly here, but for, for land divisions up to eight lots, we've got a combined preliminary and final plat process now that should streamline that process a bit for some of the community members and developers that work at that level of, of development. And then our planned unit development process changed this model to be more of a conditional use permit versus a rezone, and updated a number of standards concerning design, open space, et cetera. For the PUDs, it should be noted that almost any PUD is likely going to have a zone change attached to it anyways, just given how low-density most of Ada County is zoned, and so just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. In terms of the revised land use regulations, this is probably where we got the most feedback, solar facilities in particular. We ran a separate outreach effort on that front, came up with a new version to those standards, which is in the code before you tonight, and going to be subject of a lot of conversation, it looks like. We also updated some daycare facility standards to meet State of Idaho requirements, and established a few new uses here, which, you know, we'd already kind of had these things in the county, they just didn't really have a great name or use attached to them, so we, we called them out specifically. For water efficiency and environmental conservation, we tried to incorporate some more measures that would include things like water-wise landscaping and xeriscaping. We also worked to align our Boise Greenway overlay district with what the City of Boise requires along the Boise River, as we kind of share that, you know, natural amenity through our jurisdictions. We wanted to make sure we were on, on their page in terms of protecting sensitive species and, and, you know, required setbacks and things to that effect. The water one is another one that we got a lot of comments on from the public, and I'll speak to that more specifically in a minute. In terms of agency comments, we didn't receive any in opposition. We did receive some pretty specific comments from the Idaho Department of Fish and Game, and they were specifically weighing in on solar facilities, but also development in the rural districts, and speaking to the types of development that really could fragment the environment and pose some risks to, or some challenges to wildlife. And rather than try to summarize their comments, I just incorporated some information they shared with me to share with you, and they are available tonight if you wanted to ask them any more particular questions about their comments, but I'll just jump into the Idaho Department of Fish and Game slide. So, so in particular, you know, we've seen a lot of utility-scale solar in the area south of town along I-84, kind of the, the rangeland, the Boise and Danskin front area, I guess, and, and that's been an area that hasn't received a lot of blowback for putting these types of facilities. However, Idaho Department of Fish and Game has made it pretty clear there's a lot of wildlife that uses that area too, and we need to be cognizant of that when making approvals or, you know, asking for approvals of projects. And so to, to that point here, elk, pronghorn, 350 plant and wildlife species that we look to conserve in that area, definitely, you know, impacted by some of the facilities that we put in that area. So, I know we're talking a lot about farmland, but IDFG really wants to talk a lot about these other areas too. Some of the challenges of the use that IDFG identified as fencing, it really can disrupt habitat areas for, for big game, but it's also a federally-required part of the project based on, I think FERC largely is the, the group that is driving the, the fencing on some of these. So we need to be cognizant of that as we're, as we're potentially disrupting these areas. Devegetation, that's part of the process usually to create the place where a solar facility is installed, and so just making sure that we're not impacting things like slick spot pepper grass and, and other really sensitive species to that effect. You know, the long-term impacts, wildlife tend to avoid those sites because they can't get through very easily, so just making sure that we're, again, cognizant of that and, and trying to put projects as best we can in the right place, or creating opportunities for wildlife to get through areas as best we can. And it's really something that came up with IDFG and a lot of our conversations was just the cumulative effect of putting so many of these in one area. You know, one project at 1,000 acres, 2,000 acres, still massive, isn't as, you know, when you think about that in isolated space, it's not huge, but when you think about five to six projects like that, now all of a sudden we've got a lot of acreage that if we're not thinking about how it's sited properly, we could really be causing some problems for, for the wildlife and natural environments out there. So in the end, IDFG had some, some ideas for us, you know, they, they'd like us to uphold our rural districts a lot more in terms of the type of development we allow, really with the effort of, you know, the, the purpose statement for the rural districts is to protect rural areas, but not just farms, but, you know, places for wildlife, habitat, natural environments, things like that. So, making sure that we're thinking about that when we get proposals in those districts. And, and an idea they had as a proposal, I'm just kind of jumping right to that, you know, there's a lot of requests to expand the areas where these facilities are discouraged. Beyond just farmland, they would like us to consider important environmental features, oh, sorry, it's, where is it here? I may have missed it. Oh, here it is, the next slide. And it's, sorry, it's not showing up, but I don't know why it's not showing up, something happened there. But let me tell you what it said. Basically, beyond farms, it's to think about environmentally sensitive areas, places where wildlife are already and will be, and, and making sure that we're not just thinking about farms when we think about rural areas, but all kind of rangeland areas as well. And again, I may have stepped on some of the points IDFG wanted to make, so if you want to ask them specific questions or, or have them comment a bit more, they are here tonight to, to kind of help with that. So, sorry that the slides didn't copy over as well as they could have, Brandon and team, you guys worked really hard on this stuff, so. So now I'll jump into the comments we received from the public. So, one of the big ones, we had proposed to put multifamily housing in commercial districts. This Board had seen some projects out in the southwest Boise area that was trying to rezone commercial to allow for that, you know, in an effort to create a mix of uses and promote more housing. Our initial thought was we should put that in commercial districts, we can make that work. There was a big pushback from the southwest Boise in particular that was concerned some of their commercially-zoned property would be lost to just more housing versus creating the commercial opportunities that they felt like they were promised. Ultimately, and you'll see this in my recommendation later, staff thought removing that from the commercial districts was, was the appropriate way to go. There are other ways to get housing in those areas through a rezone process, more robust process, so just wanted to say that was a big one, that was probably what drew the crowd at the Lake Hazel Library initially, was that, that suggestion that we allow more multifamily, or that we allow multifamily housing in commercial districts. Lot of comments on solar facility standards, and I'll jump into those a little bit later, but kind of two camps, really keep this off of farmland, we don't want to see this on farmland, and others who are like, don't restrict this because we kind of need this facility everywhere. That's a real rough paraphrase, and you're going to get a lot better details from folks in the room tonight, but in general, that's what people were asking for. They also wanted some assurances in the form of long-term bonding, decommissioning plans, fire safety plans, and so you'll see some of that in the recommendations made by the P&amp;Z in particular. There were some concerns about limits on watering times. In our effort to, again, conserve water, we thought we could impose a timeframe for new development where watering would not be allowed. Heard back from a lot of the community that that was really not a very great way to go about it, because, one, a lot of the watering systems can't operate that way based on how they're designed. You know, it's a lot of pressurized irrigation systems or irrigation ponds that just can't work on a limited fashion to restrict the hours that we were considering. And so ultimately, we were, we, staff is in agreement that, you know, we, we can try to work to conserve water in other ways. Being that specific on watering times, one, was going to be a code enforcement nightmare, we'd have to send our code enforcement team out after hours constantly to make sure no one turned their sprinklers on, so that became a challenge, and so staff did agree that that would be one to, to remove. There were some concerns about reviewing and monitoring development impacts to groundwater, and that is certainly a concern of staff and this Board. You know, we've put on a lot of water summits, our county engineer is heavily involved in that issue. We opted to not throw a particular language into the code around that because our process with the county engineer and Development Services Department is to already do this. As the Boards aware, we're looking to hire a specific water professional for our department to ensure that this is going to work, so great idea, we definitely believe in that, but didn't have a section of the code that we wanted to throw that in or thought it made sense to throw it in. We think that's more of a, an agency case-by-case consideration that we're already doing and we will continue to do. There was concern about some language in the southwest Planning Area Overlay District, which funny enough has been there for decades, Richard probably knows more than me, that basically said if you, if your septic fails, you've got to annex into Boise and connect to their system. Well, in realizing we really have no control over someone being able to annex if Boise wants to take them or connect to their system, we agreed with the community that that really isn't probably a great standard for us to have in our code, because we have no control over how that process goes. And so just to allow the agencies and the jurisdictions that are already involved in that to do what they're already doing, we just thought it was best to remove ourselves in the form of a statement on our code requiring something that we, again, had no control over. There were some specific comments from the Spring Rock Plan Community Group about some internal, or some code changes in their specific zoning ordinance that referenced external codes. They just wanted to clean those up a little bit, nothing, no change to that development, just some better references to the external code. You'll see that I recommend approval of that one. There was a, a group, the Brighton Corporation, is interested in a PUD allowance for the Ten Mile Creek Planning Area, allowing for PUD-like development in that area, not to get into too much, the Ten Mile Creek Planning Area isn't in our area of impact, and PUDs are only allowed inside areas of impact. So for that area, a planned community would be the route that they'd have to go, so they were looking for another way to get there through this section of code which was included in your packet, and I believe they're here tonight to speak to that as well. I'll, I'll just say that, you know, maybe that's a good idea, but we probably need more time to workshop that versus just throwing it in at this point, but again, I'd like to hear their thoughts as, as they talk to you tonight. There was a, a large group of folks that would like us to update our wireless facility ordinance, particularly to mirror the Dalton Gardens ordinance up north near the Coeur d'Alene area. We had a good discussion at P&amp;Z with kind of the lead folks on that, and Richard has been engaged with kind of one of their spokespeople as to what an ordinance amendment would look like. At this point, throwing in a 90-plus-page ordinance into our code without getting to fully vet it with the community and everything else, we don't think that's the right move, but perhaps there are some changes we can make, and again, Richard's kind of taking that on for our team to see if, we'll come back with some update for you guys. There was a group concerned about private road standards and wanting us to just defer to the Fire District for what the design should look like. Interestingly enough, we kind of already do that with any private road, our county engineer weighs in, but we also have to get Fire District comments to make sure whatever we're approving is going to work. So, they wanted some specific language to this effect, it's what we're already doing, so again, we didn't see the need to throw that into our code, again, because it's already our practice. There were some currents about, concerns about lighting standards. This was from one individual out in southwest Boise who, a new commercial development had been constructed near them, and there had been some kind of a light intrusion issues, which what we discovered was really the wrong type of lighting had been installed, they weren't downshielding it, and all the things that our code already requires. I hope that that's been resolved at this point, we've been touching base with the developer over time to make sure that the lighting is the correct type of lighting. The point being though, I think our lighting standards already cover this, and we have the ability to go talk to new development and commercial development to say, you're not meeting our standards, you have to put downshielding and other things that protects adjoining properties. So again, no, no change proposed by staff in that regard. There was some concern about allowing self-service storage, the outdoor-only type in the RP, RR, RUT, M1, M2, and M3 districts. It's already allowed in the RUT, M1, M2, and M3, it's the RP and RR that we're considering for that temporary limited five-year term. We think this works, again, given it, it's a temporary nature, or temporary in nature, and staff's not recommending that a change be made to that as well. There were some concerns raised about what's already in our code right now, allowing dangerous and/or protected animal facilities in all zoning districts with a conditional use. It is a conditional use process, it's already in our code today. We, I think have only processed maybe one of these ever, and so we're not concerned that this is a use that we need to pull out of different districts because it's going to be a pretty robust conditional use permit process they would have to go through to make that happen, and, and people aren't looking to locate these in the residential districts, it's the rural and, and other districts. So, again, it's an existing part of the code, we're not proposing any change to that. There were some folks who were interested, or concerned about the allowing of limited office and retail in the R12 and R20 through the conditional use permit process. Again, that's that higher-density, more multifamily housing for the most part, and this is where you would likely see kind of a vertical mixed-use product with retailer office on the ground floor and housing up above. Again, limited in nature, conditional use process, for the type of product in the R12 and R20, we think it's appropriate, so staff is maintaining that as a part of the new code. And let's see, two more here, allowing agricultural and roadside produce stands in all zoning districts, these are uses allowed in our code already, just to try to support the agricultural movement here a bit more, we, we just would like to make this easier for farmers and other food producers to be able to have these pop up in a few more places more easily versus always being attached to just a large farm area. So, again, we are proposing that that be allowed in all the zoning districts, and there is a approval process through our department they'd have to go through. And then finally, we had one gentleman who would like to see crematories in the M3 district, that's the industrial airport district. We didn't accept that change right now, I think we need a bigger discussion with the airport if we're going to do something like that, because that is the district that really is there to protect, or kind of work closely with the airport. It's been left out historically, we're just not seeing a need for the change right now, and so we have opted to not pick that one up. So we're at the motion slide, but it's a long one, it's not my typical like, five-second motion slide. So, in terms of the motions, staff is recommending approval of the document before you, but with the following changes. You'll note pages nine through 20 of the staff report, there were some changes to the table of allowed uses in the table of allowed uses in the form of, we had some conditional uses that failed to show up in certain districts even though they've historically been allowed there or were in districts they shouldn't have been allowed in. So, you'll see the underlined strike through in that table of allowed uses based on the proposal we made. We'd like to see you adopt those. As mentioned before, removing the multifamily housing as an allowed use in the commercial districts. We, we've heard a lot from the community, and we don't think that's, what we have now is the right time to do that. Maybe there's a different way we have to approach something like that. We are considered, or we would ask that you remove those restrictions on watering times that I covered earlier, as well as the requirements for annexation into Boise for sewer connections. We, again, don't think we need that in our code because it's really out of our control. And then also incorporating those requested changes from the Spring Rock Plan Community. The Planning and Zoning Commission had a longer list of things that they're, they also recommended approval, but they want you to consider some more things. And so, they also are on the page of the multifamily housing not being allowed in the commercial districts. They would also like to see duplexes removed in the RP, RR, RUT, RSW, R1, and R2 districts. They also would like to see attached single-family dwellings or townhomes removed from the R2 district. And then the solar facility standards, they had a number of requests there, and I'll, the next slide or two goes over all of those. So, the first one was a change to the language where we currently have prohibited on irrigated prime farmland. They would like to change the language to shall be strongly discouraged on prime farmland, farmland of statewide importance, and farmland of local importance. They also would like a definition added for farmland of statewide importance to read as follows, and I'm just going to read all these into the record. I think that's the best way to go. Might help with the minutes later if we have to type them up. So, farmland of statewide importance is land that, in addition to prime farmland, is of statewide importance for the production of food, feed, fiber, forage, oilseed crops, and/or raising livestock, and that is available for any one or more of such uses. Farmland of statewide importance can be determined using resources provided by the USDA, Natural Resource Conservation Service, which is already the, what we are proposing be used for the version that we brought forth as well. They would like a definition for farmland of local importance to read as follows. Farmland of local importance is land that has similar characteristics to farmland of statewide importance but is determined to be farmland of local importance by the governing body of the county. That would be the Board of County Commissioners. They would like you to consider requiring the Ada County Planning and Zoning Commission to serve as a recommending body to the board specifically on solar facilities. And they, they mentioned how it would mimic entitlements like Plumery Platt's zone changes and comp plan amendments. And how that works yet would be something we'd have to figure out if you opt to take that up, but just that's something they're asking to consider. They'd like to see a standard incorporated for long-term bonding for the safe operation and decommissioning of solar facilities. They'd like to incorporate standards for increased setbacks to property lines in existing residences, incorporate standards for landscaping and screening requirements, incorporate standards for establishing wildlife corridors through projects where applicable, incorporate more specific standards regarding fire suppression and training of local first responders, incorporate standards for the review and mitigation of noise, vibrations, and signal interference, incorporate a standard for a maximum lot coverage, and increase the required distance for public noticing. So that, those were the solar facility requests, and here are the remainder of their requests. They also would like us to add back in the preservation of property rights section that's in our code today. As I mentioned, this was a reorganizing, rewriting of the old code. So, these ideas exist in the new code, but, but the P&amp;Z really liked this to be more upfront and kind of obvious and consolidated in one area. So, what they're asking is just to take this eight-one-nine and make it a section of our new code. And it really just talks about, you know, how property rights are considered in Ada County and, and, you know, our ability to enter a site or not. And so, staff really has no, I mean, I'm fine putting this back in if that's what the board wants to do. It certainly makes sense, not a hard one for us. But we do feel that it is represented in other areas of the code right now. They would like you to consider additional standards for commercial towers and antenna structures, and consider a new process for inspecting required landscaping and developments at the time of installation to ensure long-term viability. And you may hear from one or two community members tonight as to why that's important. There's been some landscaping that probably could have been installed better that would have lasted longer if someone had, you know, been on the landscapers when they put it in. So, that's a process they're asking you to consider. So with that, I'll stand for any questions, and thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the commission? Okay, no, no questions.
Okay.
All right. All right, we'll begin our public input. I might want to remind people that if a point has already been made, you don't really need to make it again. You can say, "I agree with this person," or if you just want to say, "I oppose or support" the code as a whole or, or a portion of the whole. It's, it's really up to you. Now, I've gone through here. We normally allow three minutes per individual. If we, if we do that, we have a number of people here, and that's three minutes per person. That's, what, 20 per hour? I don't know if we, we'll get through a lot, but we'll just give it a go. And so, we'll start out with Dave Wyman.
Go ahead.
My name is Dave Wyman. I'm here representing Cleanera, an independent power producer and our Idaho's largest solar developer. Our offices are located at 999 West Main Street, Boise, Idaho, 83702. I'm also a Boise native, a homeowner, and a utility ratepayer, and have witnessed firsthand the incredible growth that's taken place in this valley. As this area continues to grow, we talk often about smart growth, but one of the most urgent and often overlooked parts of smart growth is planning for new energy generation. Our region's demand for electricity is increasing rapidly. If we want to meet that demand sustainably, reliably, and affordably, solar energy must be part of our long-term strategy. Cleanera was founded in 2013 by two Boise State graduates. We employ over 170 people, most of whom live, work, and support our families here in Ada County. We have developed, built, or operated over 40 utility-scale solar facilities all around the country. We are engineers, project developers, construction managers, and importantly, we are also your constituents. Ada County truly is our backyard, and while we don't have a project in this county, we would love that opportunity one day. Unfortunately, the ordinance you're considering, as currently drafted, would likely preclude that from happening. From our perspective, much of the proposed ordinance is reasonable and addresses the many competing interests of land development. However, restricting solar development across wide swaths of the county based on prime farmland designation undermines both smart energy planning and private property rights. Solar doesn't mean the permanent loss of farmland, and unlike most development, the projects we build are temporary and reversible, and in fact, can and should be part of a responsible land stewardship when done right. Solar farms can offer stability and revenues while the commodity markets fluctuate. We've found that farmers who diversify their land use with solar often gain the financial security to keep farming, and instead of selling their farms to be turned into subdivisions, they can keep the farming tradition alive for the next generation. Well-designed utility-scale solar can benefit the community as well. Our facilities generate significant tax revenues where we operate and create hundreds of jobs. A University of Idaho economics professor ran an analysis of a project we're currently developing in Elmore County. He found that project could generate over $20 million in tax revenues for the county while creating over 300 construction jobs and paying out nearly $14 million in wages. New sources of energy are critical for our economy. Elected leaders across the country tell us how they are trying to attract new large businesses to their community, and often a deciding factor is access to reliable, affordable energy. Solar farms can be built and deployed quicker and at a lower cost to the ratepayer than almost any other resource. The current and future energy demands on our grid are massive and growing larger. Solar is a great resource to help Ada County meet that demand. The decisions you make on this issue will echo for decades. Turning away responsible solar development now is not preservation, it's paralysis. Please don't let rigid definitions stand in the way of practical solutions. Instead, trust in thoughtful planning, local oversight, and in the principle that every project should be considered on its own merit. Thank you.
Please don't do that again. This is a, is a public hearing, and we don't want to be disruptive, and that's disruptive. I'm sorry. So, please, please hold your, hold your applause and your outbursts, or we'll have to close the meeting. All right. Are there any questions from this, from the, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I'll just kick it off since I think solar is going to be a big part of the discussion this evening. And speaking for myself, and the board can weigh in, you know, I'm, I'm pro-solar, and I'd like to see more solar farms developed in Ada County. I don't need to be convinced that it's a valuable technology. The whole discussion tonight is really where's an appropriate place to put them, right? And so, I think that's, that's what we'll be discussing and debating tonight, and we'll be hearing from both sides. But, you know, you probably witnessed, we had a pretty big hearing on a proposed solar project that, that ended up getting turned down because it was proposed on farmland that was objected to by a large number of members of the, the community. What, in your opinion, is the appropriate place in, in the county to put solar? Are you saying nothing should be off-limits and each project should be considered on a one-on-one basis?
Exactly. Any project, any proposal put forth by anyone for development should be considered on its own merits. So, we're just against the idea of blanket restrictions that would preclude development of any kind.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I've got one, one question for you. Given the, the climate in, in the nation, where I understand that some, some or a lot, I don't know for sure, of the federal tax subsidies that was available for, for alternative sources of energy, are you familiar with how, how that's going? Is that going to go away, or is that going to be around, or does that, is that, does that make any difference at all in your, in your citing of your projects?
It changes every day, right? The economic benefits that have been available or will be available fluctuate depending on administration. They come, they go. Our business model focuses on each project individually, and the citing particularly wouldn't be impacted, you know, where we cite a project wouldn't be impacted by the credits per se. Citing is a, is a separate issue where we find projects to be appropriately placed.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, I'm, I'm taking these names as I'm giving them. I've, I've got a list, and this is the list of number one. I'm not taking pro or con, and, and it seems like a lot of the, most everyone here is, is interested in either solar or not solar, but that's not, this is, that's a portion of this rewrite. So, anyway, next up, Tim Walker, Wagner, Tim Wagner.
Good evening. My name is Timothy Wagner. I live at 11390 North Elk Ridge Way in Boise, 83714. I'm here to give my testimony in support of the solar and a reasonable solar policy in Ada County. Specifically, I want to express my shared concern for the loss of viable farmland in the county and the entire Treasure Valley overall. I believe we should be encouraging the preservation of prime farmland. However, I believe we should be protecting that land from all forms of development equally, not just from the solar projects. It's no secret that historically, the loss of our farmland's largely been due to residential and commercial development. We've all seen it and experienced that. These types of conversions result in increased traffic on our roadways, stormwater runoff, all kinds of demands, all draws on our public services that the county and the cities provide. Even with the most up-to-date comprehensive plans, rampant growth and sprawl often outpace the services provided by local governments. So, when you're considering the positive and adverse effects of any type of new development, we assess how they affect the existing infrastructure, our existing services, and how they fit into the overhaul comprehensive plan. To discriminate against solar projects by treating them uniquely in the name of preserving farmland while not placing that same level of restriction or scrutiny on residential, office, commercial, tech centers, or other types of development, it makes no sense, and it becomes arbitrary. And that then opens up the whole planning and approval process up to unnecessary scrutiny. I'm not asking for any special treatment for solar projects, but it's my point that the ordinance should be consistent, it should be fair and unbiased, and to actually demonstrate a concerned effort to protect the remaining farmland in Ada County. Solar gen, solar power generation facilities should be treated equally with the same level and type of assessment as any other form of development in the county. Thank you, and I thank the staff for their efforts in preparing this updated ordinance.
All right, any questions? Thank you. Max Stein.
My name is Max Stein, and I live at 2308 North 29th Street in Boise. I've been an Ada County resident for 12 years. Both of my young children were born in Boise. Full disclosure, I am an employee of a solar company, but I don't speak on their behalf. I speak as a concerned Ada County citizen. I believe the proposed solar ordinance amendment infringes on personal property rights and would effectively prohibit any later development. A landowner can choose what to use their property for. Why should clean energy have a different treatment? Solar projects are meaningful partnerships, often with farmers or families who've worked the land for generations. These landowners deserve the freedom to decide what's best for their future, just as our state's motto, "Let that freedom be perpetual in Ada County." Please don't take that right away. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, does anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you. Alex Karagad James. I guess I got it right.
It was close. It was close.
My name is Alex Karagad James, and my family owns a little over 800 acres located off of Black's Creeks Road and Highway 84 by the truck weighing station. This land has been in our family for well over 100 years and was part of a much larger sheep ranch. Our land has no irrigation, no water rights, and no standing water. We currently have a lease option with a solar developer for a possible solar farm. If this solar farm was approved and built, it would be our goal to also graze sheep on the land and bring it back to its historic use. We would like to offer this land for grazing at no cost to the rancher. You know, not long ago, I retired after almost 40 years in public service. I was a forensic chemist. The last 20 of those years was as the forensic laboratory director and quality assurance manager. As the laboratory director, I became acutely aware of county budgets and all the services that counties need to address. I mention this because currently our land's total annual property tax bill is only $2,000, probably not even enough to keep your sheriff's office canine units and food for a month. If this solar farm should be built, our property taxes would greatly increase, thus allowing Ada County much more resources to address the critical needs and services of the citizens of Ada County. Lastly, the nice thing about solar farms is that after 30 or 40 years of energy production and increased tax revenue, they are decommissioned and removed, leaving the land as it was found 30 or 40 years earlier. In fact, in our lease option, this removal process is addressed, and funding for it is held in an account for just this purpose. For these reasons and several more not mentioned, I encourage this board to reject the solar proposal amendment before you, and instead examine the original proposal as set...
If you could wrap it up?
As set forth by your planning department staff.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can I ask you, sir, is your land where it's located, would that be affected by this ordinance?
It would, as the zoning and zoning commissioners put forth, it would limit its size to such a degree that it wouldn't be profitable, and that's why I encourage you to look at what your planning department staff originally wrote. That, I think that addresses it in a very comprehensive and responsive manner and does take into several people's accounts of what they're looking for.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tom? Karagad James.
You don't want to try that last name again?
All right, no.
Good evening. My name is Tom Karagad James. I'm the grandson and namesake of the man who bought our family's fenced rite ranchland in Ada County a century ago. I was born in Pocatello and spent my early childhood years on a ranch near Marsing. After moving away, our family would spend part of the summer helping with my grandfather's sheep ranching business along with the most incredible Basque sheep herders. My grandfather was a World War I veteran, and my father was a World War II veteran in POW. Our family has deep roots in Idaho, and it's always been an important part of our family history. Today, as Alex mentioned, the Karagad James family, my siblings and cousins, own nearly 1,700 acres of land in Ada County. The land has only been used for grazing and is about as far from prime farmland as you can get. There is one house a mile away, and the housing density is probably one house every thousand acres. A solar farm there would not be in anybody's backyard. I believe the proposed ordinance from the Planning and Zoning Commission, which would essentially ban solar facilities in Ada County, must be rejected. It makes a mockery of Idaho's tradition of respecting landowners' freedom of responsible use of their land. Most Idahoans want limited... Most Idahoans want limited government, not overreach. As a physician, I always did what was best for my patients, and I'm positive that you as commissioners always do what's best for your constituents. Therefore, let me speak to some of the positives and public good that come from the solar. It's a bit redundant because I've been mentioned. It brings good-paying jobs, stimulates the local economy, increases tax revenue tremendously, protects the land by serving as a protective cap, then after 30, 40 years, it's removed, the land goes to the natural state. It increases Idaho's energy production and reduces dollars flowing out of state for imported energy, fits with the necessary above-all strategy for meeting the expanding energy production needs, allows livestock to continue to graze, uses no water, and as Alex just mentioned, the cleanup costs are paid in advance via bond. So, it protects us, the landlords for the project, and the county from the expense of decommissioning a proposed solar project. What other development comes with guaranteed decommission and a return to the land's natural state? As you can see, solar farms are good for citizens, the economy, and the land, while also respecting a landowner's freedom for responsible use of their private property. Everybody wins. In sharp contrast, I ask you, what are the positives of banning solar outright? There are really very few, if any, that I could think of and that would withstand rational scrutiny and analysis. As an Ada County landowner, I respectfully implore you to reject the ordinance recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and instead adopt an ordinance that promotes the public interest, respects landowners' rights, and prevents governmental overreach, and helps secure Ada County's energy future in a responsible way. Thank you for listening and for your consideration.
All right, thank you.
Hello, and thank you for letting me speak with you today. My name is Crystal West. I live at 5496 South Kelmea Place in Boise, Idaho. In full disclosure, I am an employee of a solar company, but I do not speak on their behalf today. I speak as a concerned Ada County citizen. I'm like, wow. They're like, you're done.
You can keep going, Roy.
Okay. I have read the solar ordinance and feel it limits us as landowners. I have lived here for 13 years, and I very much enjoy it. As a resident, homeowner, and mother, I am invested in this community and its future. I have seen housing and commercial development take over fields throughout the years, putting a strain on our resources and our schools. By installing solar farms in our county, it will help to reverse the strain on our resources, community, and taxes, as we all know our taxes keep going up. Instead, we could be using our resources, the sun, to benefit our future and our children's future, not only through clean generated energy, but from the tax revenue, the taxes it provides. These taxes can help fund our schools, infrastructures, and first responders. Furthermore, once a solar farm is decommissioned at the expense of the owner, that land can be repurposed again, farmed or otherwise. Please consider amending this ordinance to give landowners their freedom back to do with their land as they do wish. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
What does your button say? Since a lot of people have them, I want to know what they say.
151. Oh, my button. Oh, I'm sorry. Don't tread on my sunshine.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
Hello, my name is Kelly Dixon. I live at 540 South Cree Way, Boise, 83709, a lifelong Idahoan and proud Ada County resident. I want to thank Mr. Beck, Mr. David Sid, and Mr. Daley, and all their staff for holding this very important meeting. I'm here to express my strong opposition to any zoning language that would slow development of solar energy projects on land that could potentially be farmed in Ada County. I've lived in Boise for nearly 25 years and have witnessed the incredible growth that continues to make our community stronger and more vibrant. I also realize this means there is and will be much higher need for energy demand for years to come. As a homeowner who benefits from the clean renewable solar energy at both of my properties, I believe landowners should retain the right to responsibly use their land for solar development, whether it be for utility or personal generation. We need balanced forward-thinking policies in Ada County, and Ada County can lead with smart local policy that supports farmers, respects private property rights, and embraces clean energy solutions. When considering zoning rewrites and development of lands that could potentially be harmed, please allow landowners the freedom of choice by not slowing the development, especially of renewable energy projects like solar. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. No questions? Thank you.
Ms. Sterns has an image to share. Let me pull it up real quick.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Nicole Sterns. I'm a lifelong landowner in Ada County and manager of Three Greeks LLC. My family has called Idaho land in our family for generations and generations, for over 100 years. And every time Ada County has asked us for something, we've said yes. We've donated land. We donated land to build I-84 for critical infrastructure, for utilities, and we've always been of the belief that the land should serve not only our family, but for the greater good of the community. And it's for that reason we've given that land to Ada County when they asked. Today, I've come with the same spirit of service and cooperation, but also with deep concern that proposed zoning ordinance before you would amount to an outright prohibition on utility-scale solar development across most of Ada County. If enacted, this would not only erase a realistic path for projects like the one I hope to host on my land, but it would also erode the very property rights that always have defined Idaho's character. But this isn't just about me. Over the last several months, our community has come together around a simple but powerful idea that local landowners should retain the freedom to responsibly use their land as they see fit. Last week, I submitted 338 unique letters of support and petition signatures from local Ada County residents, including 79 residents of Meridian, and 85 from Kuna, who believe a common sense approach to solar is essential. I'd like to draw your attention to the visual, which illustrates where all these advocates for solar reside in the county, including those who submitted comments in support during the Planning and Zoning Commission's last hearing for a total of 461 county residents that don't want the proposed ban to move forward. And we hope that you will give that thoughtful consideration when you make your decisions about this ordinance. Solar development is compatible with agriculture. It's not permanent. It doesn't pave over farmland, and it most certainly does not strip our land of its value. If anything, it preserves it, allowing families like mine to diversify our income, contribute to Idaho's energy independence, and to keep our lands in local hands. The choice for you commissioners is not just about zoning, it's about who gets to shape Ada County's future, and we urge you to stand with the residents, and stand with economic progress, and stand with the people who believe in Idaho's promise. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? No, okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Drew Pischel. I live at 6833 North Misty Cove Avenue, and I attend Boise State University. I also work part-time for a local solar developer while I finish my degree. To be clear, I do not speak for the company, but I speak as a born and raised Ada County citizen and a student who has benefited from the presence of solar in our community. I'm here today because I'm deeply concerned about the proposed ban on solar development in Ada County. I believe this decision risks changing some of the qualities that make this area so special. One of the values I've always appreciated in Idaho is our strong sense of personal freedom. It's something I felt in my time growing up here, and it's something I would like to see valued in the future. The proposed ban is government overreach. Property owners should be able to decide how they want to use their land, whether that's for real estate development, agriculture, or solar projects. Restricting that right sets a troubling precedent for the future. Beyond the issue of personal freedom, this bill also feels short-sighted. I've seen the valley grow and evolve rapidly. Limiting our energy options now will add inefficiency and reduce our ability to adapt and grow in the future. As more people move to the valley, demand for electricity will continue to rise. If we limit what types of energy we can use, we create a choke point in our infrastructure that could slow or even stall our progress. We need access to a variety of energy sources to support the valley's growth and ensure homeowners and businesses have reliable power, no matter how our population changes. I urge you to reconsider the proposal. Let's support the right of individuals to use their land responsibly, and let's keep our options open in order to accommodate the growth that we have already felt. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. I represent landowners in Ada County, and I want to read a couple of letters they've asked me to read. Ada County Commissioners, we are the Helmick Ranches LLC, a multi-generational family rooted in Idaho. Ranching has been our way of life for decades. We currently own and manage thousands of acres across the state, including timberland, irrigated cropland, dry grazing land. Orchard ranch property under consideration is classified as dry grazing land. It receives less than nine inches of rain or precipitation annually, has no access to irrigation, requires wells at depths of over 800 feet, making it impractical, unsustainable for productive irrigated agriculture. While the Department of Agriculture currently classifies this land as farmland and statewide importance, we respectfully disagree with this designation. With the increased demand for alternative energy sources, we feel like it is of critical importance to preserve and protect the most valuable agriculture land. While the lands under consideration do not provide some agriculture value as dry lands, they are less valuable than those that are irrigated and facilitate high production. It is also in the area where the aquifer makes it difficult to promote domestic water sources, limited development potential, because availability of land sources are limited and acres have limited water, no irrigation potential, and very limited development potential. And this ground could serve well as an alternative energy source. We regret that we are not able to attend tonight to the county commissioner meeting in person on Wednesday. Please accept this written statement, which is being read to you on behalf of our representative, Norm Brown. We appreciate your consideration and hope you will make a sound judgment, and it will prevail. My next client, Ada County Commissioners, we are Orchard Ranch LLC, multifamily LLC consisting of farms in Idaho and North Dakota. These groups are multifamily states in the United States. We owned Ada County property, approximately 2,800 acres, since 2007. We are understanding the United States Department of Agriculture, classifies this land as farmland and statewide importance. We would disagree with this statement, as we have applied for water rights on this property soon after acquiring it. Even though we are on the top of the list for water rights for over a decade, none have been granted. The Idaho Department of Water does not want to grant any more rights on this side of the state. Because of desert climate, we have been unable, only able to rent it to cattle ranchers for minimum dollars. This is why we believe the best use of this land is solar farms. We regret we're not able to attend this meeting in person, but we request this statement to be speak for our LLC. We have given Norm Brown permission to represent us on this. I would like to comment further. This morning, Russ Fulcher was on the radio talking about, oh, man, we don't want restriction on private property rights.
If you could wrap it up, that'd be good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Judy Appleby, and I live at 3832 South Montague Way in Meridian. I'm a fourth-generation Idahoan who grew up on a farm. Last year, I closely followed what was happening with the proposed Powers Buote Energy Center in Melba. I understand the need for preserving the Idaho way of life and the valuable resource of irrigated farmland. However, I am currently opposed to the definition of farmland in the ordinance that is being proposed by Ada County for the following reasons. I think the language in the ordinance is too restrictive. Ada County is a very unique county. We have pockets of rich agricultural areas, as well as a sprawling city landscape and vast acres of desert land that are completely isolated. While I would be hesitant to embrace future solar development on fertile irrigated land, areas such as the large desert between Boise and Mountain Home would be an ideal place for solar farms. Yet, it is my understanding that in the proposed ordinance, this land is classified as farmland of statewide importance. For anyone that has driven from Boise to Mountain Home on I-84, it is easy to see that the desert land is not viable farmland and does not have access to irrigation resources like other parts of the county. Micron, Meta, and other large businesses in Ada County provide or will soon provide numerous jobs in our community. But as AI and other technology develops, energy resources within our state will also need to increase to support these businesses so they can continue to thrive and provide a valuable income source to our community. The Boise area has more than 200 sunny days per year. This sunshine is a renewable resource that can fuel the energy that is needed to ensure that our state has the adequate power supply in the future for both the residents of Idaho as well as the businesses that support our workforce and community. Many places around the world deal with rolling blackouts as a way of daily life. Other states, such as California, have extremely high power costs to residents. Promoting an environment that is welcoming to solar development ensures that our community can have both adequate and affordable power to meet the demands of the future. Ada County leads our state. I'm here to request that our county sends a message that we want to partner with those that can make our state a stronger and better place. I request for the definition of farmland to be revised in the proposed ordinance so it will not be overly restrictive and unwelcoming to future solar development that can provide a valuable resource to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Go, you have a question?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question.
Yeah.
So, I guess, just clarification, make sure I understand. So, you do want to protect farmland, it's just the definition of farmland that you're...
Correct, the definition of farmland.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Chair? Yeah.
I have a question for staff. Wondering if you could just, again, briefly summarize what the P&amp;Z Commission is proposing as far as the solar ordinance? And, I mean, at the end of the day, is it tantamount to a ban on solar in the county?
Yeah, Chairman, Commissioners, I'm going to show the ordinance we're proposing in the code now, and then I can walk you through P&amp;Zs to give you the comparison of differences. So, or show you the differences. So, here is what we're proposing in the code before you today. Most of this, I mean, again, decommissioning plans, fire protection plans, emergency response plans, and so forth. But we are saying they shall not be located on irrigated prime farmland. The P&amp;Z would like to expand that to, one, remove the term irrigated, and change language to strongly discouraged on prime farmland, farmland of statewide importance, and farmland of local importance. It's important to note that farmland of local importance currently doesn't exist in our jurisdiction, so that would be any farmland that this board would deem important, and then therefore would be subject to this. But we do have prime farmland and farmland of statewide importance, and this map here kind of shows you the differences here. The dark green is the prime farmland. The lighter green is the farmland of statewide importance. Sorry for no aerial imagery down here. I don't think whoever did that made it that far south. But, you know, just to reference you, this is kind of the Boise, Meridian area here. We've got the Star Eagle area over here. This is kind of the south of Kuna-Mora Road area extending into the more sagebrush rangeland step area. So, yeah, that's the key difference. We're saying irrigated prime farmland, and staff's proposal, and the P&amp;Z is opening that up to, one, not make it dependent upon irrigation, and, two, to also include statewide farmland, or farmland of statewide importance as well as farmland of local importance. So, you can see there would be a lot more land thrown in based on changing that, so...
Yes, I would, go ahead.
I guess my question is, these definitions, where did they come from?
Yeah, so we are using the USDA's, I get the exact acronym and spelling right here. It's the NCRS map, so those are the soil surveys that essentially are put together. And ultimately, the federal government oversees that, but it's done at the local level, and administered at the local level, and determined, you know, what the soil composition is and what the determination is as it relates to being a type of farmland, so. And, yeah, so, and the reason for that is, really needs some objective standard to allow our decision-making bodies to say, well, if it's one of these things, we can't do it, or we can. So that's why we went that direction.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Chair. Yes, just a follow-up on that. So, a little concerned about the phrase strongly discouraged being put in law, because what does that mean, and how do you enforce it?
Yeah, Chairman Commissioner, you know, we, there was a lot of discussion, good discussion by the P&amp;Z to that effect. They recognize that's, could be difficult for staff, one, to make a finding to that effect, two, for them to make a decision based on that. However, they feel like it leaves it open for the applicant to have to demonstrate, if you are going to put it on that type of farmland, you're going to have to make a great case for it, because right out the gate, it's strongly discouraged. So it really, I think, puts the ball in the applicant's court to justify why any conversion of farmland to solar is appropriate. That was the idea, the thought process there, and I know we do have some members of our commission here tonight that might be able to explain that to you if you'd like to hear it. But that was my sense of what they were trying to get at.
Thank you. Okay, and of course, we are now taking public testimony. We can dig into the details, I think, after we've taken the testimony. I think that would be better. I don't want to go through all this stuff.
Hello, my name is...
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Brittany Weber, and I live at 6225 South Teak Avenue in Boise, Idaho. Good evening, Commissioners and fellow residents. For the sake of transparency, I'm an employee of a local solar company. I moved to Idaho from Illinois four years ago to pursue my dream of developing utility-scale solar. But today, I stand before you to speak as an Ada County resident in opposition to the ordinance as proposed. That would limit solar development in Ada County. There have been some changes since I wrote this, and I know that Ada County has a difficult job of balancing increased commercial development, increased housing developments, increased energy demands, while preserving farmland, preserving habitat, preserving open space, all of this while trying to keep the Idaho feel that we all love. I get it, but this is about balance and encouraging the right way to do it. Putting a blanket "no" or strongly restricted on irrigated farmland or farmland of any kind unnecessarily restricts sensible developers and landowners. Let's protect both of our farms and our future by allowing responsible, well-planned solar development to continue where it is most efficient, where the landowner wants it, and where it makes sense for energy delivery, without the government restricted on irrigated parcels. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Is Alex here? Looks like a Irma, but I'm 55, 555 East Brimmer Road.
Good evening, my name is Paul Seidman. I live at 12103 West Carlisle Bay Street in Starr, Idaho. I'm a homeowner, a business owner, and father of four, and I've been a resident here in Ada County long enough to recall when the code section for annexation and sewer connection was still relevant. And I remember driving from Boise to Meridian and going through farmland to get there. I appreciate the thoughtful process and the community engagement in these proposed provisions, but having seen the growth in Ada County and the surrounding areas over the last 45 years and the projected future growth estimates, there, it's essential that there is a plan for increasing energy production. And I'm not advocating for any one energy industry, and some renewable energy production should probably be part of that strategy, but certainly not the only one. But I believe that we shouldn't be boxing ourselves in unnecessarily, and I think that each project proposal should stand on its own merit without automatic disqualifiers and burdensome language that puts further restrictions on our community. I urge that we consider further revision to remove these blanket restrictions and provide for the commission to make reasonable judgments about future projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Renee.
Good evening. It's Wee, Wehe, Renee Wehe.
Okay.
My name is Renee Wehe. I live at 5538 South Alisson Place, Boise, Idaho, 83716. I'm a resident and property owner in Ada County. The current proposal would create a functional ban on new solar in the county. I believe, as written, this is an overreach of the county's authority. It would be an infringement on the rights of private property owners and a step backward in the race to keep up with electricity needs of our explosive population growth. Converting clean, renewable energy from the sun is a win for all of us. I would ask you to come up with a more workable solution. Wouldn't it be better to work on reasonable regulations on solar development instead of a total ban? Thank you.
My name is Jim Van Denter. I live at 12088 West Tidewater Drive in Boise, Idaho. I've been in this area since 1978. I've watched it expand, and I've seen the challenge that you as a board would have, and I appreciate the efforts that you have made in the past. The challenge with this ordinance is that it does something that makes life terribly confusing. It's an attorney's dream to have an ordinance like this, which is totally unclear and undefinable. The three categories of land are interesting, but they overlap. The slide that your staff showed us of the land was done by a survey that was done in 1970. What was the population in Boise in 1970? Forty thousand, if I remember it, something like that? This area has changed dramatically, and maybe it's time that we take a look at what the definition of those lands are. Challenge with solar is that it provides a unique and unusual opportunity for this county and for anyone to provide inexpensive power. For the person who has the property, it provides them a chance to use property that they've obviously decided doesn't work for agriculture in a way that can generate fixed income. If you know about the farming community, fixed income is something that they don't have on a daily basis. Their crops go up and down, life changes, things happen, and so control of that is unusual. I come from a dairy farming background, and the price of milk has gone up and down like the gas price has. Having something that is fixed, and as has been pointed out to you, this property or this program will last for about 30 years, and then by agreement with the leasing, the solar owner will remove that property. That's in an agreement. It's the same kind of agreement that the mining people have. Hopefully, they'll do a better job than the mining people have, but it's the same kind of agreement. So rather than have a totally, a non-focused ordinance that basically says no, I think it needs to be set real efforts on the part of staff to define this in a way that you can understand what the rules are, which ones are legal, which ones aren't, and how you define it, and update the data that's being used for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Allison Boldridge. I live at 5218 North Edenberg Way, Boise. I want to thank the Ada County Commissioners and the Ada County Zoning Commission for going through the process of rewriting the zoning ordinances. There are many good things in this update. My sister-in-law and brother-in-law live on a farm in Rixeville, Virginia, that has been in my husband's family for 175 years. Prior to his retirement, my brother-in-law was the operations manager for a rural electric cooperative that supplies electricity to the farm and to the surrounding rural counties. Twelve years ago, they put in a solar installation on the farm that provides them with cost-free electricity to run the farm and gives them a small income stream. Driving throughout Virginia, you see solar installations dotting family farms, providing electricity and an income stream for these farm families. I ask that the county commissioners allow the option to install solar installations on agricultural land, thus allowing the farmland to remain with the farm families and to generate an additional income stream to the farmers. I have with me 65 written comments to submit from members of the Idaho Conservation League that failed to be submitted electronically due to a computer glitch. I wish to submit them now for the record. Thank you again for this opportunity to speak in support of a smart solar policy in Ada County.
Okay, thank you. You can submit your documents to the record.
Good evening, Commissioners. Jake Melder, I live at 10516 West Blackhawk Court, Boise, Idaho. And I have lived in Ada County now for 12 years. I came here from Minnesota, so hopefully the right side of the Mississippi. But I do appreciate you guys going through this, and you've heard it from a lot of folks. You know, when I first moved out here, my intention was to do my two years at my job and move on to the next thing, but I fell in love with this place. And one of the reasons why I fell in love with this place is because of the people. The people are reasonable. The people want to be able to live their life in peace, in community with their neighbors. And I think that, really, this proposal here, there are many good things, and I want to commend the staff. You guys have worked four years on doing public engagement, like, let's not overlook that. I do public engagement, I understand the work on that. Well done. But I do think that unfortunately, where we stand today, we've missed the mark on what is considered reasonable. An outright ban requires there to be a considerable public interest to prevent it from ever happening. I don't believe that solar, as we see it today, rises to that level. Instead, I would encourage you as Commissioners to consider not adopting any of these amendments, but instead find some reasonable ways to consider a project based on its merit. In similar vein, I would also just like to point out on the housing thing. I live in southwest Boise, unincorporated Ada County. I am in the minority of my neighbors, but I'm okay with multifamily housing on commercial areas, so. As someone who has been struggling to find a house for the last five years, I think we need more housing as well. So I would look for reasonable solutions to get more options in there for the next generation. I do appreciate your considerations.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Luke Brown. I work with NAI Select. We're a full-service commercial brokerage out of Boise. We're at 5571 North Glenwood. I just wanted to take a minute tonight to speak professionally about what we've seen with the land. First, personally, I'm an Idaho native. We have, I've personally spent a lot of time here and in the land that we're proposing a solar project, that's specifically off of South Orchard Access Road and the southern end of Orchard Access Road. And I care deeply about the wildlife there, and the threats that it proposes are very minimal. Spent lots of time out there myself and my dad in the past couple of years have shot bull elk off of land that was not a couple miles from the proposed site. As far as professionally, water development in that area takes extremely deep wells, and reports indicate that the aquifer in this vicinity is close to 800 feet deep below the surface. The water table declines have been tracked over decades. Meanwhile, groundwater in much of, just east of Ada County, is known for being very deep and slowly recharging, often with water thousands of years old, and minimal annual replenishment, somewhere in the order of 1% to 3% annual precipitation. They get, especially in that area, somewhere around five to six inches of rain or less. The key takeaway that I wanted to say here was that the land in question is classified as agricultural only due to outdated and broad zoning regulations, not due to current or potential productive value. Both hydrological and practical evidence show that it is neither viable for sustainable farming nor realistic for significant residential expansion. By approving a solar project, Ada County would not be sacrificing productive farmland. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm David Wagner. Thank you very much for having me. I'm a product developer for RWE. RWE is an all-technologies developer, all-fuels developer of power plants. That means we are a top property taxpayer, a top employer in counties around the country. We aim to preserve the land and legacy of our landowners that we partner with, and here in Ada County, we have partnered with landowners for a few thousand acres of land and plan to bring benefits to the community through a development of a solar project. The landowners that we've partnered with have shared statements tonight, verbal and written, submitted ahead of time. Our project would pay millions of dollars of property taxes per year and hire hundreds of construction and full-time employees. The land we have contracted for is classified by the federal government, U.S. Department of Agriculture, as farmland of statewide importance. This opinion designation of the federal government as farmland of statewide importance is contrary to the experience of our landowners, as they've attested tonight. Their land is non-irrigated desert land that gets fewer than 10 inches of rain a year. The quality of the farmland is why our landowners have signed with us and why our company has chosen solar as the ideal technology for an electricity project here. I oppose, my company opposes, the county's strong discouragement of solar as a use on farmland of statewide importance, as defined by the federal government. The federal government misses the mark on their definitions with, they include irrigation when they define prime farmland, but they leave that off when they define farmland of statewide and local importance. The ordinance as drafted lets the federal government interfere with Ada County's economic well-being. My company, RWE, looks forward to working with the county to benefit its residents. Thank you.
My name is David Boldridge. I live at 5218 North Edenberg Way, Boise, and I teach chemistry lab over at the university here in Boise. First, I'd like to thank the commission for the opportunity to speak and the planning commission for the effort that's gone into these documents, quite extensive. I want to, much of what I would have said has already been said, but I want to state that I am strongly in favor of solar energy production and would encourage the commission to choose wording that allows it to happen. My reasoning for that is that over at the university, I'm watching artificial intelligence absolutely explode. It's going to require more data centers like the one in Kuna, which will require enormous amounts of energy. And if Ada County wants to be a full participant in the artificial intelligence economy, we'll need the energy to do it. Further, it allows, I would ask that you allow the farmers to decide if they want to participate in that artificial intelligence economy as part of their overall running of their farming business. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Don Ferdinand.
She actually just stepped out to the restroom.
Wardell T., Hank Wardell. Hank Wardell.
Tom Wardell?
Yeah, there you go.
Hi. My name's Tom Wardell. I live at 3132 South Fallen Brook Lane in Boise. I'm a retired wildland firefighter and have lived in Boise since 2001. Why am I here? I love the outdoors. I treasure open space, and I believe in clean energy. Including solar is the way of the future. I've seen how rapidly this area has grown and has spread over the past few decades. Ada County has lost over 100,000 acres of farmland over the past 40 years. Undisputedly, single-family housing development has been the primary culprit. Personally, I would like to see the county limit further development of open lands altogether as much as possible. I realize that's not going to happen. However, I don't believe it's fair to single out solar development as the one land use it, quote, "strongly discourages," while allowing seemingly endless further housing developments. Consequently, I would much rather support solar development projects and that preserve open land for the future, while at the same time generating green energy rather than seeing more single-family big mansions and more urban sprawl. Solar development projects are temporary. They're reversible. They preserve open lands and allow future options for this county. Given that, I would recommend the county simply discourage solar project development on farmlands while at the same time discouraging further single-family housing on those same lands. This would create a more equitable approach to zoning rather than singling out solar as the one land use it attempts to strongly discourage, as is stated in the proposed zoning language. Zoning to encourage higher-density housing in already-developed areas would help limit further expansion in our county's open lands. I do want to thank the commission for adding the mitigation requirements regarding decommissioning, setbacks, screening, wildlife, wildfire, et cetera, to the proposed solar development zoning language. I believe mitigating undesirable consequences is essential to public acceptance of any future development, solar or otherwise. Again, I encourage the commission to embrace clean energy, preserve our open lands as much as possible, and keep our options for solar project development open now and in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Fletcher.
I'm Don Ferdinand.
Is Don back? Come on up, Don.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Chair and members of the board, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm here tonight to urge this board to reject the proposal for large-scale solar farms on any agricultural lands. We understand the importance of clean energy, but this project is simply wrong, the wrong solution in the wrong place. Solar energy should not come at the cost of our most productive farmland, land that feeds our families, supports our economies, or defines the identity of our rural communities. Farmland is for farming. Once we cover it with steel and glass, we're not just pausing agricultural production. We risk losing it permanently. These lands that have supported generations of farmers, taking them out of rotation for 25 to 30 years, which is a generation, it's a long time. It's effectively removing them from agriculture altogether. The economic impact cannot be overlooked. Yes, some landowners may receive short-term income from a lease, but that doesn't benefit the broader farming community. We lose local jobs, we reduce the availability of land for young and expanding farmers, or put our local food systems at risk. There's also the environmental concerns. Solar farms can compact soil, interfere with natural drainage, fire potential, displace wildlife, and limit future restoration of the land. These risks are often underestimated or downplayed by developers eager to move forward quickly. Then there's the issue of community character and land use policy. Our zoning code exists to protect the long-term vision and well-being of this area. Industrial-scale solar is not consistent with that vision. It changes the landscape, impacts property values, and disrupts the rural aesthetics that residents cherish. And importantly, this is not our only option. There are better locations for solar on commercial rooftops, parking lots, brownfields, and marginal lands that do not produce food. That's where we should be directing our renewable energy investments, not toward paving over some of the best farmland in our region. In closing, I urge this board to put our land, our farmers, and our food system first. Say yes to preserving what makes our community strong. We can support renewable energy, but let's do it without sacrificing the lands that feed us. Thank you, sirs.
Thank you. Bill Fletcher.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name's Bill Fletcher, 1407 West Hayes, A3702. I'm here to speak in favor of solar energy, clean renewable energy that will help meet the needs of our growing power needs into the future. And as such, I'm opposed to what I see as overly restrictive language in regards to farmland in the proposal. So for many of the reasons already stated, I won't repeat them. I strongly discourage using that farmland language.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Pam McDonald of 7897 West Madrona Wood Court in Boise, Idaho. First of all, I would like to thank Commissioners Davidson, Beck, and Daly for the opportunity to speak. I also want to congratulate the Ada County planners and staff members who worked very hard to develop a comprehensive plan. The years of work put into the plan are acknowledged and appreciated. I have never testified before, but I am testifying now, and I want to testify on behalf of solar energy projects on farmland. A lot of what I was going to say was already said, but what I do want to say is I'm a fourth-generation Idahoan. I've got 25 years as a resident in Ada County, and I'm a retired employee of the Federal Wildland Fire Agency and a former teacher. I love the land I have called home and the low-cost energy I have enjoyed for 60 years. Having been raised in the Magic Valley by hard-working parents of Wood River farmers, I am keenly aware of the importance of farmland and property owner rights. My grandparents were settlers of the Wood River Valley. They had land of which I will call prime farmland. They had to sell out. My family did not take that land up. It went to a California landowner, who then could have done something different with it. Luckily, my cousin was able to recoup that land from that landowner and continues to farm that land. So I am keenly aware of how important it is. Having been here for 25 years and watched the development, I know how important energy is to all of us. As a wildland fire person, I am also, who was critical in helping to develop policy, understand how difficult it is to do that policy. But I also know that we are under extreme circumstances with, and diversification needs. Just as any financial planner would say, we've got to diversify, and we've got to be ready. But the way that we have with, and people have said it tonight, the importance, the verbiage, and I'm a much better writer than I am speaker, but the verbiage that is in there now is hard to understand and has actually caused a lot of confusion. So I ask that you take careful consideration and consider solar. Do that for future generations and families like mine.
Thank you. Dave McDowell.
Hi, I'm Dave McDonald. I live at 7897 West Madrona Wood Court in southwest Boise. I'm in here supportive of allowing solar panels on farmland in Ada County. I'd like to thank the Ada County Commissioners, Mr. Daly, Mr. Rod Beck, and Mr. Davidson, for your time. Also, a huge thank you for the staff for all your hard work. As a third-generation Idahoan who grew up in the Magic Valley, I've left the state, returned in 1999 to be near family. I know how important it is for property owners, farmers, and ranchers to maintain their legacy to pass on to their children. As we all know, it's obvious that the population of Idaho, and especially Ada County, has increased in population dramatically. As a result, the growth has put a massive strain on our electrical grid. I believe we should have energy diversification, such as hydro, wind, batteries, and of course, solar. Solar will add to the equation as a clean and relatively cheap form to add to the pie as a whole. Building new solar projects on farmland has many advantages and alternatives to housing developments. Farmer and ranchers who don't want to see their land sold for housing projects can lease that land to a solar project that will benefit from the income it brings over the life of the project, as well as the taxes it brings into the county. So that's a win-win deal. Second advantage, it keeps the land in the family, as we know many kids who grow up on the farms and ranches don't necessarily want to stay on the farm and continue in that line of work. By having a solar on the property, the family can maintain that legacy in keeping the property in direct ownership instead of sowing it off for housing projects that require sewer, asphalt roads, and other infrastructure costs, especially to the county. After the life of the project, typically 30 years, land can be returned to ag use as it was before with a minimum amount of effort and cost. We owe it to ourselves and future generations to maintain and control Idaho's agricultural roots by being smart stewards of our lands. I urge the Ada County Commissioners to not prohibit these projects from going forward. You have the opportunity in leading the state and other counties and being at the forefront of change for the benefit of all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is David Garman, and I'm a resident in Boise from 4923 East Sagewood Drive. I'm currently retired after a long career focused on energy, including my nomination by President Bush to serve as an Assistant Secretary and then as the Undersecretary of Energy at the U.S. Department of Energy. I was unanimously confirmed by the U.S. Senate to both those positions and served at DOE from 2001 to 2007. After leaving federal service, I chaired the Electric Power Research Institute Advisory Council, served on advisory boards of national labs and university research programs, and served on a committee of the National Academy of Sciences focused on energy production, delivery, and end-use. Based on that background and current interest as an Ada County resident, I urge the Commissioners to consider the following. We are facing explosive growth in electricity demand that we haven't experienced for decades. Consequently, electricity prices are on the rise. Idaho Power currently has a $200 million rate increase before the Idaho Public Utilities Commission. That will significantly increase our monthly electricity bills. Now, as ratepayers, we all want electricity that is reliable, affordable, and clean. And when I began at the Department of Energy in 2001, solar was the most expensive primary energy resource. But today, it is arguably the cheapest and the cleanest. We'll desperately need additional energy resources going forward, and unfortunately, the recommended ordinance by the Planning and Zoning Commission would single out solar and subject it to standards that effectively ban utility-scale solar while simultaneously constraining the rights of private property owners wishing to maximize their economic opportunities. As a Republican, this ordinance, to me, is government overreach, blind to market realities. Not only does it drive a stake in the heart of private property rights, but it also effectively prohibits the cheapest new energy capacity that markets have deemed to be the best choice today. Idaho Power's 2025 Integrated Resource Plan anticipates that they will build 1,445 megawatts of new solar capacity between 2026 and 2033, far more than they expect for wind or gas generation. The threat to farmland is not solar. The threat to farmland is rising farm production costs, uncertain commodity prices, markets roiled by trade disputes, labor shortages, and the ever-present pressure to subdivide and develop. So from the perspective of your constituents, this proposed ordinance will drive Idaho energy prices even higher than they are already poised to go and will take our cleanest and cheapest energy resource off the table.
Thank you. Chair, can I ask you a question?
Go ahead.
Sure.
So, I mean, you obviously understand what the concern is that a lot of people would have because, you know, there's a lot of subsidies and tax incentives for solar. So as a result, they can offer more to buy land than generally the land's worth. And so without constraints, people worry you're just going to have an ocean of solar panels, you know, rolling over the county, gobbling up every last bit of farmland, and just, people generally don't want to look at that. You know, that was the biggest concern we had with the project we denied out in Kuna. So it's like, the visual eyesore of it. And obviously, if there's an inflated market because of all the federal, you know, subsidies and tax incentives, what's to stop every last farmer from saying, "Look, I better strike while the iron's hot. Sell my land now, put solar panels up." And so how do you respond to something like that? And then what do you know about, you know, the federal government's subsidizing of solar and how that affects the market?
Sure. Well, first of all, under the so-called Big Beautiful Bill, solar subsidies will be phased out for most of these projects. And I would point out that all energy resources are highly subsidized. For instance, Sawtooth Energy is proposing to put in small modular nuclear reactors in Jerome County. The Department of Energy alone has put $600 million in subsidies into the new-scale reactors that they propose to install. So energy subsidies occur across the board for all energy resources. And frankly, the ones for solar are being backed off irrespective of the loss of those subsidies. Idaho Power and its Integrated Resource Plan still intends to build more solar than anything else. So it's not really a question of subsidies. It's a question of which energy resource fits the needs going forward. And Idaho Power has spoken. The answer is solar. The market has spoken.
Thank you. Good evening, Mark.
Good evening. Hello, my name is Mark Keckbush. I live at 2630 East Table Rock Road, Boise. I support solar power generation for individual homeowners and for landowners who want to preserve utility-scale solar power generation. Today's farmers need options. Solar installations can allow family farms to survive instead of selling off their land to development, which will take up resources, not provide a resource. Solar power development is reversible and can help maintain our open spaces. Electricity costs are rising along with the cost of living in general. Idaho and Ada County need the option to produce clean energy at reasonable cost, not restrictions or overregulation. Why? Because Idaho actually imports about 75% of the electricity it requires. Solar power consumes minimal resources. Once it's installed, it makes use of a free resource, the sun, to generate electricity cleanly and quietly without the need for more roads, water lines, sewers, or other infrastructure, except, of course, for access to electrical transmission lines, which are already running throughout southern Idaho. Clean and quiet utility-scale solar power installations on private land will contribute to the county's tax base, helping to mitigate the ever-increasing property taxes we are all dealing with. Solar power development on land of marginal agricultural quality will contribute to the county's bottom line and provide cost-effective, clean renewable electricity. I appreciate the efforts of the Commissioners and their staff to update the county's zoning ordinance, but not allowing the development of clean, cost-effective renewable energy should not be part of the ordinance. Clean renewable solar power generation should be encouraged and certainly not prohibited. Thank you for allowing me to comment on this important issue.
Shiva Raj Bhondari.
Hi, guys. I'm Shiva. Thanks for the opportunity to testify. And yeah, thanks, special thanks to the staff. I know you guys put a lot of work into public comment. You guys have taken it seriously, obviously. A few things. First of all, I walked in here, and someone was like, "You don't look like you're from Idaho." I'm like a third-generation Idahoan. I'm wearing Chacos. Just wanted to show that. And I'm like going to McCall tomorrow. Like, I'm really into Idaho stuff. And that's not to say that, like, you can... And that's not to say that, like, you can be from out of Idaho and also have a say in this. But it is to say that I understand, like, Idaho issues and what matters here. And I think the way this ordinance is written is really clear that it's actually not addressing the issues that Ada County residents are facing, right? Because the things that are taking the farmland are subdivisions. You know, it's all the things that have been mentioned, right? Volatility, trade disputes, all these things. Solar, yeah, it sounds like there was one project in Cuna people didn't like. I study public policy. I'm a college student. That is a really bad way to write public policy based on one little project, and let's apply it to the whole county. No, that's like, that's a bad idea. So I don't know why y'all are doing it. Staff didn't recommend it. They're public policy experts, too. So I just wanted to point that out. And I also wanted to just, like, think about some of the things, you know, so you're single out solar, which, by the way, doesn't even take up, it didn't take away the land. Like, the land is still there. The subsidies it receives, yeah, it receives a little bit. The way, those are like percent subsidies, it's very different than other energy subsidies where, for example, SMRs, they're like literally just granting them money. So solar companies aren't buying land. It's mostly leasing that's happening, and that's keeping the land in the family and actually keeping the land open so it's not taken out by the development later. So I want to point that out. And I wanted to spend the rest of my time listing some of the things that you're not prohibiting on farmlands. You're not prohibiting strip clubs. You're not prohibiting fancy golf courses. You're not prohibiting big manure dumps. You're not prohibiting paper mills. I don't know if you guys have ever been to Lewiston, but it smells a little bit. You're not prohibiting, like, big, like, sinkhole, like, sinkhole stuff, like, putting water all over the land. What else? You're not prohibiting big factories. You're not prohibiting, I don't know, what are some, like, evil sin things? Like, I said strip clubs. Lots of stuff. You're not prohibiting McMansions. You're not prohibiting, you know, rainforests. There's a lot of stuff you're not prohibiting. I don't know why we're prohibiting solar. I think it's kind of like a culture war issue because solar is this whole climate change thing, feels like this out-of-state thing, maybe we're against the tax subsidies that Biden took, put in. So maybe that's why. But it doesn't make any sense, right? Like, let's let landowners decide how they want to use it, or let's, like, let's protect the farmland and really go after what's taking it away, which is subdivisions. It's not solar. Yeah, thanks for the opportunity to comment. And yeah, I hope you'll think about the needs of your constituents. Thanks.
Thank you. Jacob Anderson.
Good evening. My name is Jacob Anderson. I live at 1022 East McKinley Street in Boise. I had a long statement prepared, but everyone's made most of the points already, so I'll shorten it. I think that, as written, the restrictions on solar are overly broad. Definition of farmland is not really reasonable, as other people have noted. It's a lot of not really useful farmland is treated as farmland of statewide importance, and the farmland of local importance is not defined at all. If we want to support solar generation, as, you know, everyone here does, we need a predictable process that companies can follow. It should be predictable, it should be well-defined, streamlined, clear and unambiguous. So the current text does not do that. And I'd like to thank the staff for the years of hard work put into creating this. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick Terrell.
My name is Nick Terrell. I live at 8 South Randall Street in Boise, 83705. Thank you, Mr. Beck, Mr. Davidson, and Mr. Daley for holding the hearing. I'm a federal wildland firefighter. It's my 19th season, and I had to turn down a couple assignments to be here. I'm here to voice my support for utility-scale solar development in Ada County. I've witnessed firsthand this fire season in the western United States has become longer and more devastating, and the longer aspect is due to climate change. The more devastating aspect is because of the expansion of the wildland-urban interface, and that's the transition zone between human development and undeveloped lands. I believe we're all stewards of the land, and as responsible stewards, we must regulate our development using common sense and moderation. I recognize the county rezoning effort as a whole as a massive undertaking, so I commend, and a commendable effort to do just this. I commend you guys, your staff, and the Planning and Zoning Commission. But I urge you to provide landowners their freedom of choice if they so choose to develop the land they steward, with provision in the zoning rewrite to allow solar development on any designation of farmland. There's a lot of insurance policies in a housing development, and I can't really think of an example of one being decommissioned and returned to the previous land use. If we are to allow residential development and expand the wildland-urban interface in Ada County with high liability development, we should also allow development of renewable energy projects that don't permanently change the land use and pose less liability in the wildland-urban interface. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Crystal West.
Just chair, could I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
So as a wildland firefighter, do you have concerns about the large batteries that have to be placed on solar farms? At previous hearings, we've heard that some of these batteries catch fire, and they almost can't be put out.
As I learn more about this, I learned that the fire suppression systems on those units are much better. You might hear from some other commenters tonight that know way more about that than I do, but I don't have concern. As I learn more about the technology is getting better, I'm fully confident that it doesn't pose the kind of threat that it used to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Crystal West. Hello, Crystal.
Good evening. Thank you for listening to all of our comments. I know that it probably is getting pretty boring. It's a long night, and I really appreciate it. My name is Crystal West, and I'm a real estate agent, and I live here in Ada County, and I work here as well. My address is 8 South Randall Street, Boise, Idaho, 83705. You might recognize it because I live with that wildland firefighter. I've worked closely with landowners, other agents, and developers, and I'm here today to voice strong support for utility-scale solar projects and to express concern about some of the proposed zoning changes that could severely restrict them. I wanted to say that I feel like there are pretty big differences between what's being recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission and what's being recommended by the staff. I think those things are important distinctions, and I think that the staff seems to have a clearer handle on more modern, concise, appropriate use. And I feel like planning and zoning is being a little bit overly restrictive. My two concerns are that it's overly restrictive and there are unclear definitions of what farmland may be. I was recently invited into a group of agents that handles mostly land exchanges, 1031 exchanges and large land sales. And I went a couple weeks ago, and they discussed at length the project that was recently turned down. And I can tell you that the neighbors are unlikely to like what direction that's going to go for them. They did definitely block the solar project, but they're probably not going to like what's going to change because it's unlikely to be sold to another farmer, and it is still for sale. And I think that banning this type of use just because people don't like to look at it or they're afraid of losing farmland is short-sighted, and I don't think we're going to end up with a better result in the end. I do want to also say that I really appreciate the changes of proposing that these projects go down from 40 acres to 10. I think that's a great step in the right direction, so I don't want to just complain. I do think that it's clear that you guys are putting a lot of thought into this, and I appreciate it. I want to aim for a balanced approach that doesn't block landowners from making reasonable decisions about their own property. These people are trying to support their families and keep their land in productive use, even if that use changes over time. My brother is a farmer in Minnetoka County, and Ada County is a leader. So the decisions that you make are likely to affect the counties all over the state, as I'm sure you guys know. So I think that one important thing we can do as a leading county is show by example that we understand the nuance of how this is going to impact our community long-term. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Frey. Is there a Tom Frey here?
My name is Leith Thayer, and I live at 14975 West Souls Rest Creek Road in Mountain Home. So because I live in Mountain Home, you wouldn't think I'd be here. However, I own property in Ada County. We have 209 acres out there, and it is considered the state farmland. But I can tell you that you can't grow anything out there on that land because there's no water. It's strictly dry farming, and the amount of rain we get, probably five to eight inches a year if we're lucky. The grasshoppers can come in and destroy that land that you're trying to grow, that wheat that you're trying to grow, in a matter of two weeks. I had wheat that was this tall, and then I had grasshoppers, and I had no wheat. It was down to dirt. So for me as a landowner, being able to sell that land to a solar company is a great revenue for me. And I don't believe that the language that you're using for farmland should be written that way. I think it should be each piece of land needs to be considered based on what it looks like, what it's going to be used for. I know that there's a lot of single-family houses that are going out in that same area, and they're going to need electricity. This is a way to provide that electricity for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan Brodean.
My name is Ryan Brodean, 5571 North Glenwood Street, Garden City. I'm here to share my strong support specifically for solar land use in the Orchard Access area and other areas south of the airport. This property consists of dry grazing land that receives minimal precipitation annually. The desert climate and lack of water access creates significant limitations for traditional ag uses. These properties have no access to irrigation and require wells at depths of approximately 700 to 800 feet, making productive irrigated ag impractical and economically unfeasible. These same conditions that limit ag productivity make this land exceptionally well-suited for solar energy. From a commercial real estate perspective, successful land development requires matching the property's natural characteristics with appropriate uses. These property's attributes, abundant sunshine, minimal precipitation, flat topography, and limited water resources, create an ideal profile for solar energy. USDA's classification of this land as farmland of statewide importance appears inconsistent with the practical realities of the ground. True farmland of statewide importance requires reliable water resources, productive soils, and climate conditions that support consistent ag production. Solar development on these properties would provide significant benefits to Ada County: economic development, grid reliability, environmental stewardship, and long-term stability. In conclusion, approving these uses in these areas would maximize these properties' potential while serving broader community interests. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine Horner.
My name is Catherine Horner. I live at 6163 South Carlberg Place in Boise, 83709. I'd first like to thank you guys for your time and consideration this evening, and I'd like to give a special shout-out to Suzie Dupuy during her handling of the open comment period. I was so impressed by how responsive she was, and you just don't find that very often. So I want to say thank you to her in particular. This evening, I just want to quickly say that I am in opposition to the new language. I want to say that I think that it pushes the burden of proof too much onto the private property owner and that really that government should be able to show or have the primary burden to show that the solar project would not be, how do you want to say it, like, that the public good should outweigh the private property owner's interest. So that's first. Second thing is, is I think that you can be both pro-wildlife, pro-solar, pro-farmland, and pro-housing, that they're not mutually exclusive. And I think that this language is overly prohibitive and that doesn't allow for the marketplace and creativity to really step forward and show that, on balance, we can have all of these things in our community. And finally, I know it sounds weird, but I think that solar farms can be aesthetically pleasing. When I see them, I get a little excited. I think they're cool. I don't think that they look bad. And it does. It gives me hope, and I'm excited that we're looking at renewable energy in our communities and that it does have a place in our community overall. So with that, I will close my comment, and thank you again for your time and consideration this evening.
Thank you. Scott Robison. Josh Leonard.
Thank you, Commissioners, Chairman. Josh Leonard, 251 East Front Street, Suite 310, here in Boise. I wanted to start out by saying that I agree with Commissioner Davidson that the solar debate tonight is largely about where in the county solar facilities should be allowed. And rather than what's effectively a countywide ban on solar development on open land, I strongly urge the Board to review solar applications on a case-by-case basis. To be clear, there are two sets of solar amendments before the Board tonight. The first are amendments proposed by staff. I agree with those amendments. I think they're important, and I think they accomplish a fair and reasonable approach to citing solar. The second are additional amendments that were recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission. The changes recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission are effectively a poison pill and a de facto ban that will prevent the development of solar facilities everywhere in the county that solar could be viably cited. Coming from an agricultural family and as a longtime resident of Ada County myself, I do want farmland protected. The key, again going back to what Commissioner Davidson said, is what farmland is worthy of protection? Staff recommends prohibiting solar on irrigated prime farmland. That is sufficient to protect farmland that's worthy of protection. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommends going several steps farther, way too far, effectively prohibiting solar on any open land, including land of statewide importance and even farmland of local importance and as-yet-undetermined or undefined section of land. However, you've heard from several landowners tonight who've testified that their property, although misclassified as farmland of statewide importance, is actually un-farmable due to a lack of fertile soils, a lack of irrigation, and other factors. I strongly urge the Board to reject the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommended changes to what staff drafted, and instead approve the changes that were originally drafted by staff. And I'd like to thank you for your time tonight and for your leadership of the county.
Decker Rolfe.
I'll keep it really brief. I oppose the language from the PNC Commission for all of the reasons that my esteemed fellow citizens have noted, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Rob Hanson.
My name is Robert Hanson. I live at 2061 East Feldspar Court in Boise. I live at 2061 East Feltz Bar Court in Boise. And I too appreciate the comments that I've heard tonight. I've learned a lot from my fellow citizens. I'm a soil scientist and in my career, I worked on a lot of environmental remediation. And I learned over and over again, when you mess up your soils, you never really get them back. It takes a long time. And so one of my biggest concerns to come tonight was to talk about wanting to protect farmland, wanting to protect our farmers. And from the way I best understand it, having the opportunities where farmers can incorporate solar facilities into their property is a way for them to create another, an additional source of income that can help them stay viable in the future. And just one other thing I want to mention, I mean, this is happening all over the country in terms of how can you incorporate solar and other types of renewable facilities into farmland. So there's a lot of really smart people looking at different agriculture techniques to bring the two together and where you can have good farming as well as a solar. And I'm concerned that the way that's currently written, that the opportunity for farmers in Ada County to take advantage of those advances would be precluded. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Annette Hanson.
She went home.
Chris Preston. Ann.
Potcher.
Potcher. That's what I was going to say.
Okay, my name is Ann Potcher and I live at 8957 South Perfect Lane in Kuna. Yes, I'm one of the few Kunaites that are here tonight. I can't really add too much from what everyone else said tonight, but I would like to thank you for holding this hearing and letting everybody give their opinions and their thoughts. One thing I will say, I'm a small acreage landowner. I grow hay on my small acreage that feeds my own livestock. I sell a little bit of it just to recoup a few of my costs. If I wanted to stop growing crops, maybe there is another stream of income that I could utilize such as possibly solar because you're having the acreage from 40 down to 10 acreage on this new proposal, which that would be great. I can't say much else except that I agree with landowner property rights. Isn't that part of our Western values? I believe that farmers should be able to decide, can they grow crops on this soil? They can't grow crops over there, it's a pile of rocks. What can we do with it? Hey, put some solar in. So I definitely agree that the planning and zoning changes or suggestions that really it limits, it's somewhat unreasonable. It limits the farmer in what they can do with their land. Allowing solar panels on farmland that's not that usable, not productive perhaps, families can keep the farms in their families rather than selling off to developers, which has been the case. And if anyone has been in Kuna lately, anything north of the railroad tracks is all slated for development. Quite frankly, I have 1,000 houses on two sides of my land. I'd much rather see a solar farm there than this thousand houses that border my pastures. That's really, there's not much else I can add, but I do thank you for your time and consideration and I thank your staff for the work they have done.
Thank you. Steve Packard.
Chairman Commissioners, real quick, Mr. Hanson, who's just spoke, he provided comments from his wife, Annette, who left early. I can just put those in the record or I can read them to the record? You let me know what you prefer.
Just put them in the record right now.
Okay.
Steve Packard. Okay. Diana Packard. Patricia Dunlop.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Patricia Dunlop. I live at 211 West Jefferson Street. I oppose the proposed language in this. History has shown that prohibitions and bans are not generally very successful. They would limit the county's ability to respond to the needs of the community. You're basically tying your hands for any future things that need to be developed to respond to the needs of our community. There's a saying that only a true conservationist is someone who already has a cabin in the woods. We can't preserve Ada County in amber. The population of this county is going to grow by 30% in the next 25 years. And that's land use right there. And so in addition to all the power demands, and I'm sure a lot of people used AI to help prepare their remarks tonight, the power requirements for AI are just, I don't think we quite comprehend how much power we're going to need to live the way we want to live. So I strongly disagree with this very, this language that prohibits, that limits the county's ability to build a future for the people of the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis Dunlop.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to address you. As landowners in Ada County, a family and I see the code as proposed in regard to solar power development to be an unreasonable restriction and an erosion of private property rights of landowners in Ada County. We were concerned by the restrictions of the previous iteration of the code, but the latest version seems to add all other land to the effect of ban on solar on irrigated ground and adds the need to apply to the Commission for a code variance. This requirement had been removed in the previous version. I would like to encourage the county to review individual projects on their own individual merits. Solar is the lowest-cost source of power that can be developed today. Solar projects associated with storage strengthen the reliability of our grid, reducing the need for grid connections to import power from other regions, thus improving our energy independence. This is a time of rapidly increasing energy demand and we need to be able to make use of all of our resources to meet this need. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kelly Overdale. Anita Overall. Oh, is Kelly there?
I'm here, but I don't wish to go.
Do you want to just say if you support or oppose? You don't have to though.
Okay, Rich Overall.
Support it.
Anita Overall.
Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you again for taking the time to meet with us all tonight. We've been through the solar panel meetings for several years now and I appreciate that you guys are here late into the evening as well. I can speak to the fact that I live in Ada County. I own land in Ada County, several acres, we farm it. I do support the revisions that are being made because of what we've seen over the last couple of years on petitions that have been made to move forward with the size and the scale of the projects that are here. I also, like my fellow citizens, support solar. I have solar at my house. I put solar in. Idaho Power takes a generation from that and then gives me a subsidy back, which is great. I can also tell you that it was put in seven years ago. It was supposed to power 40% of my home. It maybe does 25. On top of that, because I put it in seven years ago, a few years ago, Idaho Power redid their agreement with all the landowners. At that point, if we change one cell, if we improve one piece, if we try to bring it back to code in the sense of making it actually produce more, we then lose the amount of power that Idaho Power will buy from us. So there are a lot of things to consider that haven't been brought up tonight. I do agree that you should have landowner rights and you should be able to choose with what you do, but those landowner rights shouldn't infringe on the other people who are around you either. So when you talk about the scale and the size of these projects that many of these landowners are coming in to propose and support, I support your verbiage change because I'd like to see the due diligence done behind the scenes that I've seen in this process take place in the last couple of years. With that said, I think that we haven't discussed a lot of the clean energy ramifications as far as the batteries go. You can take lithium batteries on aircraft, but you have to keep them with you because they're known to implode. The recent one that was turned down in Ada County had 10 full acres of battery. That kind of toxins into the air that isn't a known way to put out that fire is something to be considered. And the other thing is, no one during all the presentation, all the testimony over the last couple of years could come up with a reliable source on how to actually recycle any of these solar panels in the next 40 years within the United States. So that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Are you supporting the P&amp;Z Commission's more restrictive solar proposal or staff's less restrictive solar proposal?
I am supporting the planning and zoning because I think they've done a good job at making sure there's due diligence involved in looking at each project individually.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Jason Overall. Okay. Desiree Jones. Desiree. Oh, there you go. Sorry.
I want to second the comments that were just made as well as Dawn Ferdinand. She made some excellent points. I just wanted to say that I supported the modifications made from the planning and zoning. I think that while only a small portion of Ada County meets the USDA's technical definition of the prime farm end, there's substantial amount of irrigated and non-irrigated land that is highly productive and valuable. I would live on what some would consider an acreage of dry land and rocks. However, I do use that land to dry graze my animals and it is successful. The lands that support our ag, these are the lands that support our agricultural community. They protect food security and contribute to the rural character and sustainability of our communities. These additions would ensure that we are not narrowly protecting only land with the USDA prime label but also preserving productive land actually used by our local farmers and ranchers today. Unfortunately, there's a lot of pushbacks against these types of protections coming from out-of-state interest groups and movements like "Don't Tread on My Sunshine." While this campaign claims to represent a lot of local voices, the message and momentum are heavily influenced by stakeholders. Not a lot of connection. I watched a handful of their videos and some of their, I would say propaganda is misleading. Let's be very clear, we are not anti-solar. Many of us support renewable energy. We're just calling for responsible community-centered development that takes into account our agricultural community. These proposed ordinances and revisions are not anti-renewable energy. They are pro-community, pro-agriculture, pro-responsible planning. Solar development must not come at the cost of our most valuable, irresponsible land and well-being to families who have lived and worked there for generations. Please consider incorporating this language and let us lead with foresight and fairness, protecting both the promise of clean energy and the foundation of our local agricultural heritage. Thank you.
Thank you. Adrienne Ferdinand.
She's dead, Adam. She's gone.
Jonathan Wardle.
Commissioners, good evening. My name is John Wardle with Brighton. My address is 2929 West Navigator Drive, Meridian, Idaho, 83642. Appreciate the opportunity to participate tonight in the discussion regarding the zoning ordinance rewrite and provide some comments for your consideration. Our company is a landowner in Ada County and have been participating in the process, working with staff to address some land use constraints, yet afford opportunities where housing could be provided in locations that are adjacent to areas of impact, where have access to existing services, and could bring enhancements to schools, parks, and roadways. One location that we have been discussing with staff and would appreciate your consideration in the zoning ordinance rewrite is to streamline the development entitlement process in the Ten Mile Creek Planning Area where development has been contemplated for many, many years. And the first sheet that I provided there, there's two exhibits that show the Ten Mile Creek Planning Area. On the left side is an excerpt from Boise City's comprehensive plan and on the right side shows a land use pattern. I will note that this is not currently in the city of Boise's area of impact, although it is in their Boise Blueprint Plan, which is their comprehensive plan that identifies some goals and concepts and expectations for development to occur in that area. Brighton submitted a proposed zoning ordinance modification for consideration within this rewrite. Specifically, we've asked for an overlay or essentially a PUD process for this area because it is not within a current area of impact. The proposed amendment, which we've identified as the Ten Mile Creek Planning Area overlay, was submitted in a letter to you as well as providing actual code that could be adopted. It's timely because housing, commercial, schools, and enhanced open space could be provided in a location where services are available, that being sewer, water, power, which is an interesting conversation tonight. But it is not within the area of impact of any city and we're asking for a streamlined process. Additionally, it's needed for an equitable and sustainable development of an area that is literally surrounded by three areas of impact. Within Blueprint Boise, the Ten Mile Creek Planning Area, this area was to be included in Boise's area of impact. None of these goals or policies have been implemented, as shown on Page 2 of that slide. More to the point, our property is contiguous, but outside. We respectfully request your consideration and adoption of the proposed zoning ordinance amendment which we've given to you that would allow the county to direct development within the area so additional housing and services can be provided in Ada County where development already exists. Stand for any questions you might have tonight.
Okay, any questions? Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Can you just quickly summarize, what kind of streamlining are you looking at here?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Davidson, appreciate the question. Currently, this area sits outside of an area of impact. And so the process that could occur would be a planned community, which would be a fairly long, lengthy process where services would need to be provided, such as a standalone sewer treatment facility or a water treatment facility. Our property currently has access to or adjacent to both water and sewer. We are working with the city of Boise to address that. In fact, sewer goes through our property that services county subdivisions. There's an easement that the city of Boise has. So we're trying to work through that. We are just asking that the city use a plant, or the county use a planned unit development or a PUD process versus the planned community process.
And you think the city of Boise will allow you to tap into the sewer?
We sure would hope so, given that they have an easement through our property to supply sewer to other county subdivisions already.
Thank you. Well, you might be aware that we have a mutual goal of getting the sewer lines out there to be used. There's a lot of sewer lines already out there, including going right through your property. And we have expressed that interest with the city of Boise. However, you mentioned area of impact several times. Are you familiar with the change in law on areas of impact?
Mr. Chair, I am, where the cities have to come back to the county and talk about those area impacts if they haven't. There are certain distances that are now state law. I do know that that's a conversation that is to occur with the city and with the county and that needs to happen sooner than later. So yes, we have been tracking that. We are aware of that process. What we're interested in is, this is an area that has been kind of on pause for about 13, 14 years. And the city has made accommodations for, they have modeled for, they've identified that this is an area where growth could happen, but they put a pause on it. And I think we're all interested in how that could be addressed because housing exists out here already. There are services that are here already. This is a good place for it and the city had identified it. If the city chooses not to pull it in, we feel like the county is capable and able to handle growth and development in this area. So that's what we're asking for.
Yes, and you are, I am aware anyway, that there's a sewer line goes right through your property to service an adjacent subdivision. Is that not correct?
That is correct. The sewer line goes through our property and- That is correct. The sewer line goes through our property and serves the adjacent project, which is called Carmichael. And that was an easement granted by this property in anticipation that when they were ready to develop, it could be used.
Just what is the Ten Mile Creek Planning Area?
Mr. Chair, the Ten-
Who designated that Ten Mile Creek Planning Area?
Mr. Chair, the Ten Mile Creek Planning Area is actually designated in Boise City's Comprehensive Plan Blueprint Boise. They have identified it. The first two exhibits on the drawings that we gave to you tonight are from their plan. We were just trying to be consistent with that. I know that Ada County has the southwest planning area, which is directly to the north, and we were just using the same designation that Boise City had identified once upon a time. This area, as you look at the second exhibit, is surrounded, is kind of excluded from any area of impact, but Cuna touches it, Boise touches it, and Meridian is within about 1,800 feet of it. And so, this is an area that we're just asking for the county to consider as a process, as a planned unit development or an overlay, where development projects could be brought in. This is not carte blanche. We're not asking for approval rights tonight. We're just asking for a path by which the development could occur in a streamlined process.
Were you anticipating that this would be in a Boise City area of impact?
Mr. Chair, based on the plans that were there, we thought that that was the case. But clearly, you can kind of see that there is a swirvy line to our northern property and through this area, and that's not within Boise's area of impact.
Well, yeah. And so, you are aware of the, of the statute that is currently in place, that if the city and Ada County does not come to an agreement, the area of impact ends at the county, at the city boundary?
We are, we are aware of that, yes, Mr. Chair.
All right. Any other questions for, for Mr. Wardle? Go ahead.
Just, just a reiteration of what's already been said in terms of the commissioners. You are obviously fully aware of, so what kind of discussions have you had with the city of Boise in terms of connecting to their sewer?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Daly, that's a good question. We have been in active conversations with Boise City Public Works Department to determine whether this area was anticipated to flow into the existing sewer lines. That is the case. Because there is a policy in place, it is a policy that needs to be worked through. That's what we have been discussing to see if there's a way that that can happen. But I want to be clear that this area, the Ten Mile Creek Planning Area, was anticipated to go into Boise City's sewer. It was modeled as such, but they hit a pause back in 2011 or 2012.
Yes, that's, that's my area, and I'm very familiar with it. That's why the chairman's questioned, because I, just north of that is even more intensive sewer development in the city of Boise, which is, again, a moratorium in place. That's why I was interested in your, how robust your discussion with the city was.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Daly, I would say that we have been in active conversations off and on for the better part of 18 months to discuss how this could be opened up.
Because, as commissioners, we have also encouraged that as well. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's about when we wrote a letter to the mayor asking the city to consider that. And we've done a little bit of research. It just takes a resolution from, from the city council to do it. It's, it's, it's just a policy question.
Mr. Chair, that's my understanding as well.
Yeah, yeah. Would you be in favor of putting a solar farm on your property?
Mr. Chair, it sounds like anything is possible. We have not been approached for a solar farm, so I'm not, I do not have any awareness, awareness of that happening with us.
Okay, well, it's just-
Probably more in jest, but-
Well, we're just, we're just, it's almost as though we're considering just a solar ordinance, but it's, but we're, but I appreciate you being here and talking about planning for a very-
I do feel a little bit as an outlier tonight, but it is a, it is a good discussion because I think power is important to all of us.
No question, no question about that. And thank you for your participation.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Chairman?
Yeah, oh, no question.
I, I would like to, that was my last comment as well. Thank you for being here and addressing kind of the entire at tea of what we're discussing here. Solar is important, obviously, for the people who've come here, and we appreciate them coming, but there's much more involved in what we're, what we're considering.
We appreciate the opportunity to have a dialogue and the, the work that staff has put into this for the better part of almost five years probably now. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's see. Now, we're... Jackie Moffus.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity of speaking tonight. We'll be short. I do approve and support the zoning code rewrite as it is. I think that, I don't think there's anyone in this room that opposes solar. It's just the place that it's being put, and we do not want it on our ag ground. Even if that ag ground can be reconditioned in 30 years, I see a sea of these coming, of the ag farms, and you're taking all that ground out of production for 30 years, at best-case scenario. And that's why I'd like to see the zoning rewrite going to force. I also support the property rights, but that supports my rights, too, as a homeowner, and what these solar farms bring into our rural communities and ruin what we purchased as our retirement home, just for looks, if nothing else, as well as the danger of the fire, the chemicals in the water, and all the other bad things that come with it. And so, for those reasons, I support the rewrite. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob Nettleton.
Hello. My name is Bob Nettleton. I live at 4050 Overview Drive, Melba. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you at this meeting regarding my concerns with the changes in the new planning and zoning ordinance for Ada County. I am specifically concerned with the wording in the ordinance regarding the application for construction of solar facilities on farmland. The Planning and Zoning Commission has made the following suggestion to the Ada County Commissioners regarding solar facilities on farm ground. It states, "Solar facilities shall be strongly discouraged on prime farmland, farmland of statewide importance, and farmland of local importance." I would like to see the wording in the new planning and zoning ordinance to read as follows. "Solar facilities shall not be located on prime farmland, farmland of statewide importance, or farmland of local importance." Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to let you know my thoughts on this matter. I hope you will consider this, this change in your final decision.
Thank you. Greg Skreen.
Sirine.
Sirine.
Thank you, commissioners. I appreciate the time and opportunity to give you comment tonight. I'm here as a strong supporter of renewable energy. Solar is inexpensive. We have a lot of it in southern Idaho. It helps build renewable economy and jobs, and is a way Idahoans can build and maintain their own self-reliance when it comes to energy. Idaho currently uses four times more energy than it produces. This creates a critical gap that must be addressed as our state continues to grow. Local solar projects are essential for closing this energy deficit while electricity affordable for residents and businesses is maintained. Solar also helps reduce peak demand stress on our grid during summer and winter extremes, making our energy system more reliable and resilient. Just to close off, because somebody have said more eloquently than I probably can tonight in favor of solar power, I think it's, perhaps may be important to think of it as solar energy as a crop, in much the same way that any, we're looking at any other land product that we're talking about in terms of agricultural production. So, energy is just a crop production coming off of whatever the landowner and the project desert thought might, that land might produce. And so, I think maybe that might be helpful in thinking about how we want to promote solar power and how it should be decided on site specifically. And I also think, we also should give some thought to it as, in terms of the ammunition we need that's going to help us flight, fight climate change, that's going to help us, the ammunition that we're going to need to help us fight fires, to help us fight clean air in Idaho, to help us fight low electrical and energy rates for Idahoans. These are the things that we need for the challenges ahead. We need that kind of ammunition. This is not a time that we should, I think, trying to be thread needles when we have those challenges ahead of us. And we ought to be looking at solar as a crop that's appropriate to the land, and we look at each one site specifically. So, thank you very much for this time and opportunity.
Thank you. Abigail Cage.
Hi, good evening. I'm Abigail Coggy. I live at 498 East Old Saybrook Drive here in Boise, 83706. Thanks so much for your time and staying so late tonight. I'll keep it quick. I do support the language that the staff has put forth that distinguishes about prime irrigated farmland, but I oppose the language that's been put forth by planning and zoning. I feel that it's restrictive and just limits opportunities for Idahoans. Thank you.
Thank you. Adrian Gallo.
Adrian Gallo. I live at 1211 Half North 16th Street in Boise, Idaho. First, thank you for providing an opportunity to provide input to the new zoning code, and thank you to you and the staff, really, for incorporating the best practices, gathering years of community input. And the overwhelming majority of updates really are welcome to the county. So, sincere thank you. Congratulations to getting this far. I do have physical copies of comments that I submitted to the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing and to this hearing because it looks like a computer glitch didn't allow the PDF to be included. So, I'm including those here. I will summarize my comments by saying, I am a soil scientist, and I've directly mapped soils in farms, forests, wetlands, and vineyards across the western United States. My doctorate focused on soil productivity and analyzed thousands of soils across North America. As a result, I'm very familiar with USDA farmland classifications. The Ada County Soil Survey, of which these maps that you've seen are based on, the surveys were done from 1967 to 1977. The final report was published in 1980. And I think we can all agree that what we thought limited agricultural productivity then is not what limits agricultural productivity today. And at the time that we had in the 60s and 70s, our maps were rather crude, our techniques a little bit crude. I always emphasize for people using soil maps, that only the grower or producer who lives and works the ground for a living knows their soil, and using imprecise maps from 55 years ago should never substitute for on-the-ground knowledge. In fact, even the Ada County Soil Survey says, quote, "The map does not show the kind of soil at a specific site. Thus, it is not suitable for planning, the management of a farm or field, or selecting a site for road or building or other structure," end quote. So, while it sounds like a good idea to use soil maps to protect the most productive soils, we have to understand that these soil maps were never made with a level of precision that would justify the government from preventing a farmer or rancher from managing the land under their own feet. And in fact, even the Comprehensive Plan for Ada County says that they support more energy production. In Section 5, it says, quote, "To continue to support opportunities to develop local renewable energy facilities," end quote. In another section, it says, quote, "Encourage the siting of solar, wind, hydrothermal, and other renewable energy facilities in Ada County," end quote. So, I will conclude by just saying that growers need their own expertise of their own private lands recognized, and by imposing more regulation on their daily operations, it undermines private property rights and hinders their preferred forms of economic diversification. I would urge the commissioners to adjust the language on power facilities to instead read, quote, "Solar facility, solar facilities shall be discouraged from being located on irrigated prime farmland." Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes. So, my question would be, do you know if better, more accurate current soil maps exist for Ada County?
Not for Ada County. There are things called, one of my best friends is a digital soil mapper. He uses LiDAR, drones, a lot of people power, and graduate students to do surveys, and that takes a really long time to do. But to my knowledge, there are no more accurate soil maps available.
Thank you. Thank you. Go ahead.
As a soil scientist, what, what was the purpose of the soil analysis that NRCS did? What was, what was the primary purpose of it?
The, so, these were conducted in the 60s and 70s, but they were conducted across the United States primarily to identify what places we could farm. And of course, this was still at the time when irrigation dishes were being built. We didn't know exactly how deep there was an impermeable layer or a very salty layer that would prevent any kind of agricultural production from happening. So, at the time, again, it was very crude, but it was primarily with the intent of finding out where we can grow food. But of course, that was in the 1960s, and agricultural technologies have changed since then. We have center-pivot irrigation, slow-release fertilizers, you know, targeted micronutrient fertilizers now that just didn't exist back then. That is why Idaho is an agricultural powerhouse today and will remain so in moving forward.
Mr. Chairman, follow up?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, are, are those statistics used by USDA for any of the farm programs? Is that soil data used for any of this, any of the farm programs right now?
That's a good question. Of course, each farm program is different, so I can't comment on exactly. I would suspect that the answer is yes, just because this is the only data we have, and we've been using it for a really long time, even though we know that it is imprecise. Any farmer, grower always wants to know exactly where on their field they need to fertilize more, irrigate less, where it's extra stony. So, in some ways, the soil maps are always as a good first look, but you always have to actually walk that ground. And that's why I would defer judgment to private property owners, farmers, and ranchers to know what's best to do with their own land.
One more.
Go ahead.
And so, now, this is the basis for, this is a question. The way you just described it, USDA uses this as the basis, and they, then they individually analyze the, the farms for, even for farm programs, correct?
Of course, depending on which farm program, but yes, generally, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Vidalis.
I have a, just a point of order here. I was appointed by the Southwest Ada County Alliance to speak on their behalf, because I think I'm the only board member that was able to attend tonight. But I also have comments of my own apart from that, so can I speak on vote?
Sure, go ahead.
My name's Carol Vidalis. My address is 10963 West Oleana Drive, Boise, 83709. SWACA, Southwest Ada County Alliance, had submitted several things earlier in a letter. I was asked just to speak on neighborhood meetings tonight. We are asking, we would like to see additional verbiage in the rewrite about neighborhood meetings, if not over the county at large, specifically within the southwest planning area. There's about six things that we'd like added. We would like to have that specified, that they be held in a climate-controlled structure near the project site. Currently, there's no requirement for that, and several of them, there was one held recently, when it was 100 degrees outside. It was held outside of the property. That kind of goes into the next point, to be held in a venue that's accessible to people experiencing mobility impairments, walkers, whatever. Also, vision and hearing impairments. If you're holding it outside, you don't have a microphone. One of these ones held recently, there was a lot of wind and road noise, so people that have some problems couldn't hear everything. The current rewrite is suggesting, well, the current code and rewrite have these neighborhood meetings on weekdays as well as Saturday. We would suggest we prefer them just on weekdays. A lot of people want to- A lot of people want to sleep in, or they go out of town on the weekend. The current code or the rewrite saying seven days for the notices, we would like that extended to 10 because we've had experience where the post office takes too long to deliver. People may get the notice the day before and can't change their schedules to participate. We'd also like to have the notices have requirements, the actual mail notice, have requirements such as the specifics of the planned meeting, a description of the project, the proposed and current zoning, the general site plan, and the contact information of the applicant, including the email and telephone number. There's no requirement currently for what is to be presented or discussed at the neighborhood meeting. It just says to give the neighbors an idea of what's going on. We'd like a little bit more specific. I end here, but like verification of is of the neighborhood meeting is all that's specified right now. So, that's what SWACA would like.
Okay. Did you give those to our staff?
They were mailed in earlier.
So, they're the record then?
Chairman, we do have the SWACA letter.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. On my own behalf, what I would like to talk about is I personally would like to see this whole thing put kind of on hiatus a little bit and have even more homeowner input or resident input. You see at the beginning of the introduction, they talked about, we just had open houses this year, and all the things that got changed just based on those open houses. This, the current and the rewrite, there was no track changes on that. There are 600 pages. It's difficult to, you have to look at the new one, go to the old one, find the section, and read them both to see what's changed. And there are sections that were, yes, the different charts and drawings are very nice, but some of the sections that have affected me personally haven't changed, and I think they need to. Some of the areas I've personally dealt with, the definitions are lacking. I'll give an example. The current code in page 274 of the rewrite defined residential care facility as providing non-medical care, but non-medical is not defined. So, we're having an issue with that now. It comes down to what's the meaning of the word is, and you know, who thinks it is. There's no mechanism to verify the details submitted by the applicant unless you have the hearing. If you have the hearing and the applicant's making statements that aren't accurate, and you can prove that they're not accurate, you can testify to such. But if the applicant isn't even having the hearing yet, and it's just, you know, there's, I don't know, sometimes it seems like Development Services doesn't have enough authority, and other times it seems like they have too much. I feel like that the signage requirements are insufficient as well. We had one where I, it was the lack of due diligence on the part of the applicant that at the last minute, they changed the hearing date, and they weren't required to change the sign. When neighbors actually put something on the sign, the applicant had the sheriff show up to complain. So, it seems like it was just trying to discourage homeowners and residents from being involved in the process. And I also have learned now that the code to my, has insufficient rules to manage an application when the applicant now is stalling and keeps wanting to have a tabling. So, those are just some of the problems that I personally am dealing with. The one that was mentioned here about landscaping, that P&amp;Z added something, that was another thing I personally dealt with, but I don't want to take a whole lot of time because that was in the record before. So, any questions?
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you. Carlos Vidalis. Good evening, Carlos.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Carlos Vidalis. I live at 10963 West Oleana Drive. Most of what this has been said, but however, I would like to point something out to you. I think that a lot of effort has been put on this ordinance rewrite, but I am concerned that if you approve it, we're going to spend the next five years trying to figure out what was in it and how it affects people. I think that it was a mistake to both restructure it and change it at the same time. I mean, I am kind of crazy, and I did read the whole thing, but it took me days, a couple of weeks to figure everything else. Something paid off. Ada County Development Services allowed me to provide comments, and I see some of my comments have been reflected on the things that they want to change. I very much appreciate it, but I'd like to point out that this hearing and the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing is evidence of the problem. It has been the solar show. You know, 95% of the concerns is about solar problems, and you're going to make it, have to make a decision on that one way or another, but everything else, perhaps 95, 99%, is just gone by the wayside, not being paid attention because since we're trying to pass a big ball of wax, a lot of things are being ignored. I do think that there are some fundamental flaws in the way that ordinance exists now. My wife previously pointed them out. I will not repeat them, but I would like to, I would prefer that this was held, that the ordinance was restructured first without any changes, and then begin, accept that just as the restructure, then start accepting changes to section at the time. It would have given people a better opportunity to review the changes. It would have given the community also an opportunity to understand how it affects them, and frankly, it would have made it a lot easier for you. Right now, I don't envy you. I think that you have a big problem, a big decision to make. I think you're up to it, but as I said, there's going to be a lot of times that you will not understand what you are approving until down the road, you start seeing the problems. So, that is all I have to say tonight. Thank you very much. If you have any questions for me, stand by.
Would you support sewer extension in your area?
Absolutely. Absolutely. I'd like to see that. You know, if Boise will not lift a moratorium, I hope that the sewer service is taken away from them, perhaps spin it off into a district that is not politicized.
Thank you. Any other questions regardless? Mr. Chair. Yeah, go ahead.
So, with regard to the neighborhood meeting idea about it has to be in a, I guess, air-conditioned structure, what if the property is, you know, a giant vacant farmer's field in the middle of nowhere? Would you want them to put a tent with air conditioning, or should they be allowed to maybe go to, you know, a restaurant close by that's not on the property?
Well, you know, I have been to a number of those meetings, and it depends on the weather, right? There was a meeting only last week in my neighborhood for a storage facility, and the weather was beautiful, and the land was flat. So, you know, it really wasn't a big deal, except that we couldn't see any images on the screen. And when I said, "Okay, show me the images, send them to me later," he said, "Well, what I showed you on the screen was the wrong thing." So, even that, there were problems then because they didn't have the proper equipment. I think that we have the public libraries, and they offer you to rent a place for free. I think that would be sufficient. There's also clubhouse in HOAs. You know, we held a neighborhood meeting in my HOA about a month ago that went very well. So, there's a lot of places that they don't have to be tent air-conditioned like that. They already sufficient, they already meet in places where people can do it. So, yeah, they should be, they should not be on the street.
Thank you. Thank you. Jeremy Chow. Good evening, Jeremy.
Good evening, Chairman. Chairman, members of the committee, my name is Jeremy Chow. I'm an attorney given personally representing Clean Era. As most of you know, Clean Era is a energy producer based out of Ada County. For the record, we oppose the rewrite of the solar section, of the proposed ordinance, in large part because it frankly takes away, again, your discretion, your flexibility to consider things from a case-by-case basis. As many of you know, it's for family farms, it's feast or famine. Oftentimes, it's more famine. And when that happens, these solar facilities can be a solution to farms that are in various situations. We have a county, we had a farmer in another county that frankly was struggling, and instead of selling to a developer, what we ended up doing was leasing part of their farmland to a solar facility and allowing them to continue the farm and keep the family farm for an extended period, still getting income from the farm facility, oh, I'm sorry, the solar facility, but allowing them to continue the farm. And after 20, 30 years, it's decommissioned, and the farm is still in the family. The alternative would have been selling to a developer. So, solutions like that work, and it is a concern that with the passage of this language, you're going to eliminate that kind of solution for Ada County, for Ada County farmers in the future. Now, I'd like to address a couple of the comments that Commissioner Davis had raised. We completely agree that most people are supportive of solar, but the issue is whether it's where it is appropriate to place it. And in this particular case, with the passage of this ordinance, you're going to tie your hands on where you're going to be able to place it. The second thing is, when you're talking about the various amendments and language to be considered, again, I kind of agree with Commissioner Davidson that strongly discourage is not something of a standard that I've ever encountered, and I've been practicing close to 30 years. So, it, the language still needs a little bit of work and tweaking, if you're talking about working and tweaking that language. We believe that the current system, the cut process, conditional use process actually works. That's my, that's my presentation. I'm open for questions.
Any questions? Go ahead.
So, are you supportive of staff's less restrictive rewrite of the solar code?
Chairman, back, Commissioner Davidson, we're actually supportive of the status quo, which is utilizing the conditional use permit process. It's my understanding, again, I don't comment on the, I guess, the ultimate determination, but it's my understanding that you actually did have an application, a solar application that was denied. So, you had the discretion to look into that situation and deny that permit. We don't think the system's broken. If you are going to revise and the language, then really, I'd like to, we did submit on July 16th some proposed language, and part of that proposed language included revising your National Resource Conservation Service reference to Classification 1 and 2. It's my understanding that there are eight classifications under that prime farmland definition, and the top two are the best in terms of the farmland, and it just gets progressively worse. So, we urge you to consider that, that correspondence that we sent frankly a couple weeks ago.
Okay. Mr. Chair. Go ahead.
So, obviously, the downside of the status quo is it doesn't give a lot of certainty to applicants if it's all decided on a case-by-case basis. And obviously, my concern is I don't want an applicant to go through, you know, a year or more of planning out this development and trying to build support, showing up for a hearing, and then his entire neighborhood shows up to oppose him, and it's very hard to grant something when your entire neighborhood is against it. So, it doesn't give an applicant a lot of certainty. Wouldn't you think that by restricting it to certain areas, that would give an applicant a little bit more faith that they'll actually get across the finish line?
Chairman, back, Commissioner Davidson, I, there's not really a lot of certainty a lot in this business, but it's better than closing the door completely, and I believe that's what a lot of the, what you're considering is doing, just a complete ban, and much rather take the chance in front of this commission than having the door closed.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mitchell Taylor.
Thank you, Commissioner Daly, Commissioner back, Commissioner Davidson, for your time and consideration of this ordinance. Thank you, staff, for the enormous amount of work. This has been a Herculean effort with the amount of comments that have come in. Thank you to the fellow members of the public for all your written and oral testimony. All of your perspectives matter. My name is Mitchell Taylor, and I'm here representing Savion, who is a landowner in unincorporated Ada County, down kind of towards the south end of Canada Road, just north of Rose Lane. I've stood before you both successfully, having gone through a permitting process, and unsuccessfully, having gone through a permitting process for solar here in Ada County. In each case, projects seeking approval were evaluated on their merits, as they should be. We are not here to represent any particular project, but rather a draft ordinance that affects all of Ada County and would effectively block solar while setting bad precedent for other uses of land. What staff has put to the P&amp;Z was reasonable. What the Planning and Zoning Commission has recommended in their memo is not. If I can show a visual here on the projector potentially, or...
Chairman, it'll take just a second, so we might want to pause.
I can continue while that, while that's in process for expediency.
Okay, go ahead.
The ordinance from P&amp;Z does not reflect reasonable and fair rules for solar that would permit in any location in Ada County, as this map will show. It is not a response to the need for local energy, protections on agriculture, or private property rights. What has been proposed is a unique and ambiguous process to get a recommendation from the planning and zoning, and then also go to you for approval. To your point, Commissioner Davidson, just a moment ago, this makes the process much longer. The creation of unique and discretionary recommendations really is, as we're going to show, just shows that we're basically 100% of the county that's covered, especially when you take into account the protections along the Morley Nelson area. So, to do so on an archaic federal soil designation is not Idaho. We heard, go out to the desert plenty of times, but that doesn't account for the fact that some of the projects, in fact, all of the projects that have been permitted in Ada County are also on lands of statewide importance. We would strongly recommend that you make a decision whether the P&amp;Z actually decides on a conditional use permit based on fair and reasonable designations, or the Board of County Commissioners approve solar by the same process that solar has been approved by in the past. Not both. Solar projects can and are committed to being good and quiet neighbors, preserving land from irreparable damage, laying foundations, providing a good opportunity for farmers with rough ground. Please don't block this community from benefiting from this local resource and economic opportunity that these landowners have in front of them. On this map, you can see with developed lands, statewide importance lands, prime farmland, and Morley Nelson, we're basically left with the airport.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? No. Thank you. Thank you. Richard Wees.
Mitch, could I have the picture?
We need that, ma'am.
We'll need that to put in the record. Thank you. Richard Wees. No, no. Rodney Wees. Gavin Shat. Alan Russell. Rich Rayhill. Leslie Vander Schaaf. Dustin Vander Schaaf. Oh, there's Leslie?
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Leslie Vander Schaaf. I am Ada County resident and property owner, living at 3633 West Green Lane in Kew. I've modified my things, so I apologize if this is disconnected, but I wanted to express my support for the current proposed zoning ordinance with the changes that were recommended by Planning and Zoning following their May 22 hearing, specifically as it pertains to the proposed solar ordinance. I appreciate the efforts in crafting a policy that aims for a sustainable balance between groups, the renewable energy groups, and agriculture preservation. I recognize this proposal represents an agreeable middle ground, supporting solar expansion while maintaining reasonable oversight. Nonetheless, I urge you to continue to... Nonetheless, I urge you to continue to prioritize protections for agricultural ground. Agriculture remains a cornerstone of Idaho's economy and a vital part of Ada County's heritage and economy. At the state level, agriculture generates $37.5 billion in sales in 2022 and supported approximately 126,800 jobs, meaning one in every nine Idahoans relied on farming or related industries for their livelihood. Regarding solar development's impact on farm ground, the U.S. Department of Agriculture's Economic Research Service reports that between 2012 and 2020, approximately 43% of utility-scale solar projects in rural areas were sited on croftland, with another 28% on pasture or rangeland. By 2020, this amounted to 336,000 acres. Looking ahead, the U.S. Department of Energy's Solar Future Studies projects that achieving their electricity grid by 2035 may require up to 5.7 million acres of land. By 2050, solar installations could occupy between 10 and 10.4 million acres. This represents a shocking increase of 310%. We need to do more to protect our active agriculture lands from this type of development and encourage solar projects to use underutilized and marginalized ground instead, ground that isn't viable for farming. We need to word our ordinances to prevent solar companies from simply drying up farm ground to make it spit a set of rules, spit a set of rules. We need to protect ground that is actively farmed or has been actively farmed and prevent a solar company from simply intentionally following ground just to no longer call it irrigated or no longer call it farm ground. Using the designation of prime farm ground doesn't do enough to protect Idaho's agricultural community. In fact, the verbiage of prime farm ground itself is too vague, as there is prime farm ground if irrigated, as well as prime farm ground if irrigated and removed of excess salts and sodium. It's unclear, does the ordinance cover both? I would ask you to consider verbiage to include all designations of farm ground, as well as farmland of statewide importance and farmland of local importance, and also to prevent the unintentional removal of water rights or the intentional following of ground.
Could you wrap it up?
I, yeah. Time is of the essence. The city of Kuna recently rezoned 600 acres for a data center, which will take 800 megawatts of power. Using Power's Butte as an example, 2,400 acres for 200 megawatts of power. That's an equivalent of a need for 9,600 acres of solar ground needed just to sustain this incoming data center in Kuna. At that rate, we are going to lose our farm ground at a massive rate and devastate the agriculture economy. So, I'll stand for questions.
Any questions for Leslie? Thank you. Dustin Van Der Schaff.
I support the rewrite by Planning and Zoning as it pertains to solar.
Sorry, Mr. President. I'm trying to fix it on my... Kayla Van Der Schaff.
Hello, Commissioners. Sorry, I share my long shaky voice, so I'm sorry. I forgot about this point. My name is Kayla Van Der Schaff, and I'm an Ada County resident, and I live at 3633 West Green Lane in Kuna. As a lifelong resident of Idaho and as the daughter of a farmer, I'm in support with the proposed rewrite made by P&amp;Z as it pertains to solar. I've heard many here state that the state has grown and change is needed because of this. However, how many call for change yet forget that the basics of humanity are necessary for flourishing? Crops and food can only be created through soil. And all animals need food to survive. How is a farmer supposed to farm with no grain? How is a cattle rancher supposed to raise their cattle with no land? How is a dairyman supposed to sell milk without crops to feed their cows? The rewrite written by P&amp;Z strives to find a balance between our basic food needs and those of green energy. Unrestricted zoning codes will undoubtedly favor the deeper pockets of large energy companies. And if we don't take a strong stand of what farmland is used for, we will soon find that after 20 to 30 years of solar reuse, there will be no farmers, no ranchers, and no dairymen to take a stand for our rural lands. Thank you. Any questions? Sorry.
Thank you. Ted Van Der Schaff.
Hello, Commissioners. Ted Van Der Schaff, 3633 West Green Lane, Kuna, Ada County resident. Thanks for allowing us all to testify here before you tonight. I do not envy your job regarding this ordinance deal. I'm here to talk specifically about solar. I've been in front of you guys several times over the last year over different solar projects and different development projects, but it's solar tonight. You know, I'm hearing, I didn't prepare anything. I'm just kind of talking off the cuff here. But I'm hearing a lot of people that are pro-solar. I haven't really heard anybody that's against solar. I myself am not against solar. I'm against a little bit about location. I am afraid that we could have an industry come in here and wipe out another industry. I may have mentioned I'm a farmer in the South Kuna area. I'm concerned that, you know, solar comes in and takes up a bunch of farm ground that we can't recreate. That, in turn, will affect a lot of jobs in town. You know, I noticed that there were a lot of people here testifying from Boise. A few of them were working for solar developers. I think that's great. I hear them kind of talking about job preservation. That's sort of why I'm here, too. I'm trying to preserve my job. I'm trying to preserve the job of all the people that work at my milk plants, work in the sugar beet factories, everybody in town. They all rely on our ag grounds in South Ada County. You know, specifically talking about some of the language, we talk about prime farm ground or farm land. We talk about lands of statewide importance. I think in the original text from staff, we talked about irrigated farm ground. I think that one of the concerns in the changes there is that if you use the original language and if a developer would come in and take the water rights off of a piece of farm ground, it technically would no longer still be prime land. It would actually change its designation. So, we're actually not trying to argue what these, what these policies or what these terms should be. We're kind of trying to, you know, wordsmith some language that a lawyer or a developer can't work their way around. We're trying to put some sideboards on this so that we can determine where a solar project should properly be and maybe where it shouldn't be. And I think, you know, we get a lot of words here, and because we get a lot of words, then we get a lot of people up in arms. And I understand why there's concern with landowners with dry ground that think they might have the right spot to put solar. I can understand, I appreciate that. I think that you're seeing certain projects get a lot of pushback and other ones aren't. I know from my perspective, as a Dairy Association member representing dairymen for my own operation, I'm trying to protect my interests. I'm trying to keep my dairy farms, my milk plants running. I'm trying to keep my farms viable, you know? And so, that's really, to me, what the impetus is here, is how do we determine where a solar project should be versus not?
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you. Karen Dickus, or...
Karen Nichols?
Yeah, there you go, Karen Nichols.
I agree with everything that Mr. Van Der Schaff just said.
Okay, thank you. Bob Nick...
Nichols.
Nichols, okay.
Yes, I agree with everything what Ted was talking about, with the keeping of the farm ground that's irrigated and keeping it the way it is.
Okay, thank you. Ron Zimmerman.
Hi, I'm Ron Zimmerman. My address is 1235 Newport Drive in Brady, Idaho. I do own some property out in the Kuna area. It's farm ground, and it's currently being rented out to a farmer who's grazing seed corn on it at this time. Anyway, it kind of saddens me to see all these, over the years, growing up in this neighborhood, this valley, seeing all these houses growing up and these good farm grounds. So, that's kind of where I'm coming from. I hate to see the farm ground disappear. And the wind and solar would be into that neighborhood, too, because the solar really has a lot of massive requirements for land on it. For example, it would take about, to provide 1 gigawatt of power, you could do that with 1.3 square miles of a nuclear or a coal or natural gas plant. With the solar, it would probably take about 35 to 75 square miles to produce that same amount of power. That 1 gigawatt would provide about enough for roughly 75, or 750,000 homes. Then also, the lifespan of the, and recycling challenges there of the wind, of the solar infrastructure, they'll have shorter lifespans. They're going to lose about 50% of their capacity in roughly 10 years. And they'd either have to be upgraded or you just have that much less capacity on that. And after about, they say they use the, you can reconstitute it back to the farm ground in about 30 years after their lease is up. Well, if they, in 30 years, what's our power requirement's going to be? It's going to go up. So, chances are bringing that back to, good farm ground, back to the farm ground would be very slight. They'd probably want to renew that, and it would just continue to be solar ground and would be losing the solar ground. Essence, I strongly like to see, especially the prime farm ground and irrigated farm ground continue to stay as such and not be allowed to go into solar. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Amanda McNutt.
She's not here, she left.
Chris Vanderwood.
I support the P&amp;Z suggestions as it pertains to solar.
Thank you. Emily Troopner.
Give me a second, sorry. Good evening, Chairman Beck, Commissioner Daly, Commissioner Davidson, and county staff. My name is Emily Troopner. I am employed by Savion, an energy company based in Kansas City, Missouri. I appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. Tonight, I would like to focus my comments on the solar recommendations made by the Planning and Zoning Commission on May 22, 2025, and included in staff memo dated June 12, 2025. Some of the commissioners, some of the commission's recommendations are reasonable and balanced, including the recommendation to incorporate standards for long-term bonding for safe operation and decommissioning of solar facilities. That's smart. Savion made the same recommendation in a letter to the county dated on March 25, 2025. Planning and Zoning also made a recommendation to incorporate standards for increased setbacks to property lines and existing residences. Also smart. Solar facilities should not be held to the same setback standards as the underlying zoning district. Increased but reasonable setbacks from adjacent non-participating residences to solar facilities is a common and responsible practice. But one very concerning recommendation made by the Planning and Zoning Commission is the recommendation that solar facilities shall be strongly discouraged on prime farmland, farmland of statewide importance, and farmland of local importance. On its face, this seems like a measure to protect farmland, but it is effectively a ban on solar that does nothing to protect farmland, especially when you consider the real reason farmland is declining in the county. The map that my colleague Mitchell Taylor shared earlier is an illustration of this effective ban that members of this community have spoke to tonight. The few white remaining areas on that figure illustrate where solar could be feasible, but it doesn't take into consideration several other limiting factors for solar development, including available capacity to transmission, a willing landowner, environmental constraints, engineering constraints, and more. That area is simply not large enough to give a developer confidence that they'd be able to find enough land to develop a solar project. If the county adopts solar regulations that include the Planning and Zoning's recommendations, then it is saying no to solar and its innumerable benefits. In closing, I respectfully request the board review Planning and Zoning Commission recommendations closely and carefully and weigh the benefits, but more importantly, the risks of each. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you. Derek Van Der Schaff.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Derek Van Der Schaff. I am the son of a farmer located at 3633 West Green Lane in Kuna. I am currently intending college to pursue the dream of coming back to work for the family farm. I am here today to express my support for the proposed rewrite, including the proposed changes by P&amp;Z, as it addresses the beneficial use of solar while still protecting agricultural farm ground. Thank you for your time, and God bless.
Thank you. Cindy Greschen.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for serving the people of Ada County. We greatly appreciate your time and effort. And I also thank the staff for the effort they put into this project. I wish they would break it down into smaller pieces so we all don't have to sit here till 10 o'clock every meeting since power disputes, but hopefully someday they can work that out. First, I just want to, been taking notes, I also support what the Planning and Zoning Commission proposed to you and the changes made. And they did that basically because they heard you in 2024 and your reasons for denying power disputes. And they made sure that those things were included with their recommendation to you. And so, I support the write-up as they proposed. I also saw it come, go from a, some Ada County code that addressed mostly panels on roofs, panels in yards, to what it is today. And I thank the Melba community for bringing attention to solar and wind and everything else that we need to update our codes. My particular focus has been on the energy storage. In the past, with every plant, any power plant, any kind of energy generation comes storage. Okay, and I still have a problem that they aren't addressing energy storage. Currently, every, there's Boise Binge. You've probably heard the outrage there. 10 acres of lithium battery containers and 200 feet from the, from the community. There's, I'm from LD 23 District, so I know about Ojai County, Canyon County, and they're all facing Idaho Power coming in there, putting in a transmission station, and then slight, quietly adding battery storage. People think it's nothing, but they don't realize what they're putting in their backyards. And they're all running into these problems. There was a big problem with power disputes. I proposed, I've been to all these meetings, and I suggested that you treat, basically that you treat batteries, energy storage like you treat lighting, your lighting code. It's that simple. There's different kinds of energy storage for different areas. There's moderate, medium, industrial. And all of this stuff that they're creating is industrial size. And there should be specific codes for that, and there should be specific codes for e-bikes, or, you know? And so, they changed something in the code. They called it energy storage, and they make it approved in every single zone, R1, without defining what energy storage is. There's all kinds of it. And you had a question earlier about how safe is it? And I have some information on that. Just, there's all kinds of batteries. There's safer batteries. Idaho uses the cheapest with the least storage timeline in it. There's so many better solutions.
Could you wrap it up, ma'am?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Please pay attention to energy storage.
Adam Gustafson.
Good evening. My name's Adam Gustafson. I live at 6011 Beaumont Road, Kuna, where I run a, my family runs a small farm down there. there. Since it's been mentioned a lot tonight, something I wanted to bring up was property rights. I find myself a kind of a conundrum, being a small government advocate, you know, but the world we live in, the rules we play by, I think we all need to play by those same rules. I keep hearing people say that any restriction on these industrial solar projects is a violation of property owners' rights, and that the owner should be able to do whatever they want with their property. But the truth is, I live in a rural area, and I can't build an apartment complex on my land because it's against the zoning code. So, for, I'm sorry, because it's not compatible with the surrounding community. The reason zoning exists is to create order and preserve the character of different areas, rural, residential, commercial, and to protect the rights of all the property owners in that area, not just one. When we make exceptions, we're not expanding rights, we're often shifting burdens onto the neighbors who also bought their land with the expectations based on those same zoning laws. The other big issue I have with the solar issues coming in, or the plants coming in, everybody talks about energy. There's no guarantee that these are, this power is gonna be delivered to us. It's not gonna help us, there's no guarantee of that. If these are Idaho power projects, it's different, but these are private corporations that are gonna go to the highest bidder, and they're gonna sell out of the state. So it takes up our land, affects us, but we don't get the benefit, we're not guaranteed the benefit from it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Gary Level. Theo Level. Matthew Walsh.
Hi there. My name is Matthew Walsh. I'm an Ada County resident, I lived in Idaho most of my life, 20 years now. Live at 9379 West Medallion Drive, Boise, Idaho. I want to speak in opposition of the proposed solar amendment for a couple reasons, and many, many people brought this up already. I just wanted to call notes to the growing energy need in our community. Big data centers like the Kuna Data Center, which would draw between 600 to 800 megawatts of power, is a concern, and like the growing Micon factory and a lot of other items that, you know, we want, encourage big businesses to come in and start doing things, but we need to be able to supply power for that. By including this language in the bill, it limits how we're gonna supply that demand. I'm not saying that solar is a magic silver bullet or anything, but we need to give our community options and ways on how to add power to the grid, instead of just restricting it outright. That's all I really wanted to say. Thank you.
David Ferdinand.
Dustin Thompson.
Commissioners, good evening. Thank you for your time. My name's Dustin Thompson. I am an Ada County resident. I reside at 3889 West Ladle Rapids Street in Meridian. I am pro-solar, and I am against some of the, some of the changes being recommended by planning and zoning, specifically, as everyone indicated, the language regarding prime farmland, which effectively bans solar in Ada County. I'm not gonna rehash a lot of the valid and great points that have been brought up. I do want to note, as I believe Matt indicated, the growing need of power in Idaho. We've talked about the data center needs, the growing community, the build-out in this area, as well as the industry. And Idaho Power has to procure more resources in order to meet that demand. If there isn't competition or supply in the area, they're gonna have to go elsewhere, they're gonna have to import power. That importing power is expensive. And ideally for us, as ratepayers, we would like Idaho Power to procure the cheapest resources, the most reliable resources available, because that in turn keeps our rates down. If they don't have that, they don't have that ability, then they're gonna have to procure more expensive power. That will then get reflected, you know, and rate-based to us. So that, I think that's important to reflect as well. Also, just re-emphasizing the need for, you know, private property rights and the restrictedness of this solar ban, which is more restrictive than some of the prime farmland preservation conditions in, you know, California and Fresno County, for instance. It's effectively a ban, it's something that we can't work around as being in the solar industry. And so reflecting something like in the conditional use permit process, where you take the pros and cons of each solar project, right? And you balance that out with mitigation measures and conditions to find a balance that works both for the needs of the industry, for the needs of the county, and also for the surrounding residences. So I'd be in favor of keeping a conditional use permit process where it evaluates each project by its own merit. Thank you.
Thank you. Dustin Ferdinand.
Evening, Commissioners. Dustin Ferdinand, 5197 South Happy Valley Road, Kuna, Idaho. Just like everybody else, I want to thank you guys for all the time we've put into this, you guys have put into this. This has been a long road so far to get here where we're at. Hopefully, we can come to some terms, or maybe, you know, this simplifies it in the future, where all of us aren't having to come to town over solar, over solar, over solar, and we can't come up with some sort of good agreement. Zoning matters, you know? Zoning exists to protect property rights, just not for the landowners, but for the community as a whole. It dictates what can and cannot be done with land, especially when a proposed use could negatively impact neighbors and the community. You know, just like quite a few people said before, you know, it's like my land. My land's not zoned for a brothel, and rightly so, because that would affect my neighbors and their property values and the character of the area. Well, we kind of live out in the country, some old farmers, maybe some might want a brothel around there, but, but it's not gonna happen because it's not zoned for it. That's how we protect our land and our neighbors because of the zoning, zoning issues. The character of the area. And then, in the same way, but more, large-scale solar farms can actually kind of have lasting consequences on property, just like, say, a brothel or a drug rehab center, which I know that's been kind of a hot conflict lately, too. Now, so this temporary use, that this term keeps being used for solar farms, come on, just like what Ron was saying, is the power, is there gonna be less demand for power? Once, once solar is put on solar, on farm, farm ground, is it really gonna be taken off? I mean, really honestly? Like, we know it'll never happen, or this is gonna be another fight for the future. So, you know, if we don't set some laws in effect or rules to, you know, inhibit this to protect our ground, my feeling is, is once this farm ground is gone, it will never return. And then, you know, while tonight, it feels like this is a local discussion on this topic, but we're not alone. This same issue has come up across the country and the world for years now. And then, just today, I see, and according to USA Today, 15% of U.S. counties now have restrictions, bans, or special land use rules for large wind and solar projects. I'll wrap it up.
Yeah, wrap it up, thank you.
So, just a reminder is, well, I can go on and on. That's the problem, there's so much to go, this is a pretty hot topic. But just appreciate you guys' time, and let's be thoughtful of what we do.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Dennis Ferdinand.
Hi, Commissioners. My name is Dennis Ferdinand. I live at 5197 South Happy Valley Road, Kuna, Idaho. And I'm speaking as a concerned resident regarding the proposed language currently in the planning and zoning revision. And I am, you know, including the wordings of the solar farm shall not be located on farmland of local importance, farmland of statewide importance, importance, and prime farmland. And I agree with those wordings, because there is plenty of BLM farm ground for solar farms to go onto. And I won't go into the definitions of those because you've already done it. And then, the replacement definitions above of those farm grounds should also be implemented for all development on industrial solar facilities, battery storage facilities, data centers, and wind turbines. There's no need to destroy farmland. However, the wording in regarding industrial solar farm ground as strongly discouraged, I feel should be changed to not allowed on farm ground. Also, I have a major problem of individuals testifying that are not from Idaho. Out-of-state individuals have no interest in our local community's lifestyle, future generations, or loss of farmland. They do not live here. They are paid by major developers for profit only, and should not be heard, in my opinion. Thank you for listening to my voice, and thanks for considering and adding to this.
Thank you. Aiden Shingles.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm from both Melba, Idaho, as well as Boise, Idaho, through my family. So I'm both Ada as well as Canyon County. With this whole solar thing, I've been dealing with it for a long time. With the changes, I would urge you to vote in the affirmative. I know a lot of people have argued that we have an energy crisis for Idaho, but I don't believe solar would be the proper method to get to there. I know there's been multiple suggestions of nuclear power plants, preferably not on farmland, but we have many government area, like for solar, for, sorry. But that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. James Birch. Nate Murphy.
Oh, we have a, James Birch is here.
Oh, okay.
Hello. Chairman and Commissioners Davidson and Daley, I'm one of the two members of the Ada County Planning and Zoning Commission that's here tonight. And, and I hope that you'll give me a little extra time, other than just the three minutes, because there's been a lot of misinformation, and I can give you the background of what has happened, why we've gotten where we are, and some of the misinformation I can correct that the folks that are behind the Don't Tread on My Sunshine have put out. So with your permission, I will go ahead, and as Mr. Letson said, I'm available, as will be Nate Murphy, who will succeed me. So here's where we got from the recommendation from staff to what the Planning and Zoning Commission has recommended. The Powers Butte project has become front and center because it is in farmland that is currently being farmed. And the Savion people from Philadelphia and from Kansas City have been to virtually every meeting where this has been discussed. The change that was recommended to the code by staff, in our view, opened up the opportunity for the Savion people to come back, and notwithstanding the unanimous rejection of that project by this body, to say the only place where an industrial solar farm would be prohibited would be on prime farmland. Well, part of that project, a good part of the Powers Butte project, is not prime farm ground. What it is would be effectively grade B farm ground, as opposed to the very best farm ground that's in the county. And so if you look on the map from USDA, you'll see that the very best is a much smaller portion than what the grade B effectively would be. And so by that logic, Savion could come back and say, this is not on prime farm ground. Therefore, you, as the Board of County Commissioners, have already let that ship sail. And as a result of that, we are entitled to go ahead and put a solar farm on that property that you unanimously last year said they could not. So that's how we got to the revised language. In part, that revised language is the U.S. Department of Agriculture saying, if you want to protect that particular land where Powers Butte is located, as well as the adjacent land to it, what you need to do is include a definition of farmland of statewide importance. Now, if I can, I would like to respond to the, what has been referred to by a member of the public as a smear campaign against the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I want to address, for those few people that are remaining here, what the Planning and Zoning Commission is. We're not in cahoots with anybody. The Planning and Zoning Commission, as you folks know, are individual citizens. They're made up of accountants, they're made up of retired people, they're made up of contractors, they're made up of lawyers. We've had a professor on there in the five-plus years that I've been on that Planning and Zoning Commission. I am now the second most senior person on that commission, and I have served as a chairman of it. With that said, we have a diverse body that is very conscientious about the decisions that are made. We will get proposals that will have hundreds of pages in them, and we read them all. We read the letters from the public that are submitted. And what we get out of that is basically 50 bucks for one meeting a month that we come to, and sometimes we get some cold pizza. And then we stay here until sometimes 10 or 11 o'clock at night. So that's what we get. The $50 is to pay us for the gas, in my case, to come from Melba. And by the way, I did not give my name and address, so I am James Birch. Address is 7250 West Dickman Road, Melba, Idaho, but it's Melba only because of the zip code. I am in Ada County, and if I drive six blocks to the west, I'm in Canyon County. So with that, if I could, let me address some of the things that were stated by the folks that have opposed this. Now, as I mentioned, the Savion people have come to virtually every meeting. We had open houses, we had an open house, we had three open houses. We had an open house that was conducted at the Kuna Public Library. At that meeting, Craig Poff from Philadelphia, who's a Savion senior development person, he specifically told me that they would not make the same mistake that they made when the Board of County Commissioners unanimously denied that project. Said, we'll remember, and we will bring people to the meeting. And whether or not it was Craig, or whether or not it was the Idaho Conservation League, they were successful. A lot of people came here. But some of these people that have come, have come perhaps under the misapprehension of what it is that the Planning and Zoning Commission has recommended. What the Planning and Zoning Commission has recommended is, as stated, of the four categories of farmland, which are prime farmland, farmland of statewide importance, farmland of local importance, which, as Leon Letson has said, currently does not exist, but gives you the opportunity, as the elected body, to say, this land is so important that we are going to designate it as farmland of local importance. Then the fourth category, we haven't even mentioned, that's unique farmland, and that would be farmland, for example, that has some plant or whatever on it, that... would be farmland, for example, that has some plant or whatever on it that only grows there and that the Board of County Commissioners says, that is so important that we can't let it be touched. So with that, if I can go through some of the misinformation that has been put out there and that's been discussed today. First of all, the folks and the Savion people that are here tonight, including Mr. Leonard, who's their attorney, have said that this is a complete ban, effectively a complete ban, on solar within Ada County. Now, I will actually, if you will permit me, I will show you what it is that we intended, as the Planning and Zoning Commission, to do. Leon, are you able to?
Put these up.
Do you want to show them on the overhead, or do you?
Overhead.
I think we can do that over here.
Yeah, please put those up.
In 2016, the Ada County 2025 Comprehensive Plan was adopted. This is from that 2025 Comprehensive Plan, and it shows the farmland that we're trying to protect. And where most of that farmland is, is on the border of Ada County and Canyon County, in the far southwest corner. That is where the Powers Butte Project is. There's also some farmland that is just south of Cuna. Now, at the time this was adopted, the goal of the plan was to preserve, protect, and conserve farmland in Ada County. Since 2016, no one could have anticipated the explosive growth. The farmland that was up in Star and up in Eagle is gone. Farmland that was down in Cuna, south of probably Hubbard or Columbia, clear down to Deer Flat, is gone. From Locust to Meridian, that farmland is gone. There's subdivisions there. So what's left is a pretty small amount. Now, if I can show, let's see, all of them here. So what was shown just then is what Ada County said should be preserved, protected, and conserved.
Okay. We've given you a lot of latitude. If you could wrap it up here pretty quick, we appreciate it.
All right. I appreciate that, too. So if you look on here, I'll just point out, this is what we're talking about, and this is what we're talking about, as far as preserving. What is farmland of statewide importance? Farmland of statewide importance is what you decide. You decide what farmland of statewide importance is in consultation with the Department of Agriculture. And so what you should decide is you're going to prohibit the industrial solar farms on what I just showed you there, that strip of ground that goes down between Ada County and Canyon County, as well as the little strip that still exists south of Cuna. Now, in addition to that, the farmland of statewide importance had added to it preservation of livestock area. All of the stuff that Leon showed you that makes it look like the whole county is farmland of statewide importance, that's never been the intent. And if anybody watches the YouTube video of the May 22 meeting, they will see that. We have never suggested a ban. Everybody on the commission is in favor of solar, but not in favor of it in that area. So how would people know where that was? They would know where it was because you, in connection with the United States Department of Agriculture, will have a map, and you will draw on that map, and you will say, in this area, the industrial solar farms are strongly discouraged. Basically, it's a presumption against industrial solar farms that can be overcome with enough evidence.
Okay. Thank you.
That help?
That helps. Thank you.
All right. Any questions?
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Nate Murphy.
Chairman Beck, Commissioner Daly, Commissioner Davidson, thanks for having us here today. Just had a quick point of order, if I may, with Mr. Letson, as far as a word that he left off the memorandum, under the solar facilities, point five after bonding. We agreed that we were going to add the word "and insurance" in there, I believe, on our meeting, so just wanted to state that for the record. And then, let's talk about something other than solar for a minute. Just wanted to talk about the re-zones, because there's a lot of other sticky stuff in the rewrite that does not have to do with solar. And Mr. Letson mentioned it, the multifamily, the allowed use of multifamily in LOC 1, C2, townhouses in R2, 4, 6, and 8, and duplexes allowed in RP, RR, RUT, RSW, R1, and R2. So I believe allowing these massive changes just to occur and not giving the public the right to come and either challenge if somebody wanted to, who has a five-acre lot, wants to, if their neighbor wants to put up duplexes, you know, next to them, they wouldn't have that opportunity to question that. I'm not saying that in all instances, maybe duplexes might go very well in a certain piece of rural residential or rural preservation, but I think the public deserves to be able to question why, and it shouldn't just be an open, an open bag. So I believe that's important. In addition, we've run into this, and this isn't even up here, this has happened since. I think we should add no conditional use permit for private riding horse arenas. We've had about three or four people come up, and they're just putting a little small riding arena for their daughter and whatever up, and they gotta go through the whole process like it's a full, you know, rodeo arena style thing. So I think maybe in your notes, you know, if you wouldn't mind just taking a look at that. And then, anyway, so there's, there's other items, including preservation of property rights that, on Title 819 of current, that is not on the new, and I just think it's a good idea to have that in there, you know? And then, if I may, just speak a little bit on the solar real quick on the backside, I'll keep it, I'll keep it brief. Just kind of talk, you know, just kind of making notes, you know, and people saying discriminating against solar and reasonable restrictions, but it appears that all the reasonable restrictions that we're suggesting are unreasonable. And if I may have a couple, a couple just to...
You can wrap it up, yeah.
I'll keep it brief. The personal property rights, and a couple people have mentioned it before, is important and, but, once you start affecting your neighbors, now you're affecting their personal property rights. And I'll do a tongue-in-cheek example, you know, if I wanted to put a rocket ship launching pad, I'm sure there'd be some restrictions on my, on my property. I took the liberty of writing up some specific items, maybe for you to look at and to consider, and I have one for each of you, but just real quick, I think there should be land coverage caps. I haven't seen anything on that, you know? You shouldn't have a 10, or, or at least you should be looking very closely at somebody who wants to put over several thousand acres. I think there should be insurance for, for naming Ada as additionally insured. And public notification distances need to be obviously increased because the 100-foot or 200-foot doesn't work in, you know, these open areas, so a lot of people aren't gonna kind of be able to respond to these sort of questions. But if I may, I'll...
You can wrap it up.
Mr. Letson, and he can give you each a copy.
Give that to Mr. Letson for the record. Thank you. Justin Kravnik.
Mr. Chair.
Did you have a question?
Well, I'll just make a statement. I wanted to thank our two P&amp;Z Commissioners for attending tonight and for all the work you've done leading up to tonight's hearing. You know, as for me, I think we should give considerable deference to our volunteer boards and committees, especially since you guys have, you know, you've held hearings, you've heard testimony, you've reviewed the law, you've had extensive discussions, and so, you know, you're a volunteer board, and I think, you know, we do need to give you deference, because otherwise, why did, why did we put you in those seats? So again, I thank you for all the work you've put into it and for staying late. I know you've been through a hearing probably this long, and probably many of the people here testified in that hearing, so thank you for your wisdom and insight in this very lengthy process.
Okay. We'll proceed. Justine Krawnick.
My name is Justine Krawnick. I'm having a hard time on figuring out what to speak on tonight. It's almost like I'm having to have the same fight for the last two years all over again. I live at 6380 Stagecoach Road, Namp, Idaho. I am a neighboring property owner to the site where the Powers Butte Solar Project was proposed last year. I'm here tonight, not just as a concerned resident, but as someone who has consistently shown up in this room, at the State House, and in meetings with local officials to advocate for one clear goal, protecting Idaho's farmland, rural communities, and local control. Alongside Debbie Davis and Dustin Ferdinand, we represent rural community advocates, a group committed to protecting Idaho's rural communities and farmland. Earlier this year, we testified at the Capitol on multiple bills related to energy siting and infrastructure accountability. The legislation we supported focused on ensuring that energy generated in Idaho is first offered to Idaho utilities before being exported. Tax exemptions for data centers are limited rather than indefinite, and large-scale energy users like data centers and crypto operations pay the full cost of infrastructure they require, instead of passing those costs on to everyday rate payers. That work mattered, and it helped shift the conversation statewide. Farmland is not vacant land. It is working land, and rural communities are not just open space. They are people, familyhoods, families, and livelihoods that deserve protection. Last year, we stood united to oppose the Powers Butte Solar Project. We took the time to educate ourselves, ask hard questions, and speak with facts. Once the community understood the permanent loss of productive farmland, the risk to water and infrastructure, and the disruption to our ag-based economy, there was no question industrial solar does not belong on farmland. And you agreed. Your decision to reject the project reflected a clear understanding of the stakes and a recognition that this kind of industrial development is simply not compatible with the character and needs and the future of our agriculture communities. That effort earned trust. Just last week, Doug Hanson with Cuna Planning and Zoning emailed me about a proposed battery storage project. He shared that the developer had been advised to reach out to our group before applying because even local officials recognize that we are thoughtful, informed, and speak for the community. But not all developers act in good faith. Last year, Savion offered good neighbor agreements, cash payments to surrounding landowners to stay quiet. That's not partnership, that's payoff. And so I ask how many of those speaking in favor tonight have signed one of those? How many will actually live beside those projects without profit, without profiting? And about those promises of jobs and tax revenue, 90% of jobs disappear after construction with only one to three long-term roles. Most of the power is exported. Locals don't get cheaper rates. Tax revenue is often reduced or delayed through abatement, sometimes returning as little as $50 to $100 per acre per year, while active farmland supports entire economies. And when they all say that land will go back to farming, there are no documented cases anywhere in the world. I'm almost done. North Carolina State University says there are no documented examples of solar sites being restored to productive ag use. Soil remediation can exceed 2,500 per acre, and there's no guarantee the land will ever fully recover. We are not anti-renewables, we are pro-responsible siting, and we strongly support prohibiting industrial solar on all categories of farmland, prime, local, and statewide importance. Strongly discouraged is a step forward, but we need to go further and set the precedent Idaho needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Kayla Stone.
Good evening. Thank you so much for this opportunity to talk to you. My name is Kayla Stone, 7848 Murphy Road in Melba. I partially paid for college with a speech and debate scholarship. So one of the arguments we often used was the court clog argument. Basically, we would argue that whatever our position was would create such immense amount of court cases that everything would just take forever. And I feel like the same thing is happening with the solar. I mean, this is the, what, second, third time we've been here past 10 o'clock? And that's just on a few projects. If we don't set some restrictions in place, we're going to see essentially court clog, except it's, you know, Ada County Commissioners' clog, where, you know, you'll get so backlog with, if they have to continually ask for you to look at a case-by-case basis, which is what several people advocated for this evening. And that causes two main concerns. First of all, the hearings that go on and on forever, and the other issue being the community engagement. And that it just becomes a big issue of keeping communities engaged over and over and over and over again makes it really difficult to get a true community view when we've asked them to show up time and time again, and it's the same issue over and over again, people start to not show up. And that doesn't mean they don't feel that there shouldn't be solar on farm ground, it's, they've said their piece, can we move on now? So my, I ask you tonight just to really consider the strongly disagree language, or just shall not, would be what I would prefer, be on farm ground. I think that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Debbie Davis.
My name is Debbie Davis, and I live at 7240 Butte Road in Melba, Idaho. I am here to support the addition of specific zoning language that restricts the placement of large-scale industrial solar facilities on our agricultural ground. Since 1945, Ada County, we have lost 75% of our ag ground. And as we know, agriculture, they contribute millions of dollars to our local economy, as well as they provide thousands of jobs. On the other hand, solar facilities create very few long-term jobs. Most labor is during the initial construction phase, and it's often out-of-state contractors. Once it's completed, the site is largely automated. The land is taken out of food production, and the community loses a vital part of its rural economy. And it is absolutely unrealistic to believe that after installing millions of dollars of infrastructure, and 20, 30 years down the road, we're gonna need more energy, that they're gonna pack up all of their equipment and go home. It's just absolutely unrealistic. Okay, we are already fighting an extremely tough battle with housing and communities replacing our farm ground. At this critical juncture, why not eliminate the hazard of losing our farm ground to industrial, out-of-state, big-money interests? The great part about this is that there is actually a solution. We have vast amounts of ground that we can put this on and not on our farm ground. I was gonna address the property rights, but I think that that has been addressed significant enough tonight. We know that we can't, our neighbor can't turn their next-door neighbor's house into a strip club, and we have to, you know, respect the property rights of ourselves and the people around us. One thing I want to bring up is that Ada County is not alone in facing these zoning challenges. So across the United States and around the world, communities are taking action. So there is California, Illinois, Ohio, New York, Indiana, North Carolina, Kentucky, Virginia, Texas, and even Idaho counties are now enacting solar ordinances to protect to having agricultural ground disturbed by solar, solar facilities. Also internationally, France, Germany, and the... Also internationally, France, Germany, and the Netherlands have also followed suit. Last year, members of the community came out in full force, and they made their voices heard in opposition to a proposed solar facility on 2,400 acres in our community. You listened, and you appropriately denied that project. How many more times do we have to rehash this? By placing restrictions for solar on our farm ground, we will ensure that this does not keep playing on repeat time and time again to exhaustion, when we already know that we need to protect our ag ground. Savion has attended every public meeting, every open house and hearing, as well as testified. I'm almost done. It appears that they plan to keep this up until they think that we're either going to, they're going to wear us out, or they're going to find some loophole that will allow them in. The only parties that win from this are the solar companies and those that sell out to them. I'm asking you once again to uphold the wishes of your, of our community and protect Ada County.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Amber McKee.
She had to leave.
Cole Woodford.
Commissioners, I'll keep it brief. I have a, I'm an Ada County resident. I've, I live at 3781 West Peak Park Court. I've lived in, gosh, I've lived here most of my life. And it's, it is something to see our farmland go away as you get older. I think there needs to be a balance. And I think that's what most of our developers hopefully are proposing, right? The solar developers is to work in conjunction with the locals that are here. I, I work for a solar developer in the area. I'm a land man. So I'm boots on the ground. I meet landowners every day. And I could tell you the difficulties of trying to find a project, a site for it, is immensely tough. And it's not necessarily zoning per se, but it's trying to find the right infrastructure. I mean, utility scale solar only works when there's utility scale infrastructure in the area. And that's what makes things restrictive, is when there's not utility scale infrastructure in the area, you can't put solar there. And when you have utility scale infrastructure running through your prime farmland, and that's some of the only open area for energy development, where else is it going to go? You can look at public space, but that process is long and arduous, and it's very expensive. And by doing, going that process, it makes projects more expensive, thereby it can increase the, the interest, the rate that, that landlords have to pay in terms for their energy for their homes. A more affordable project is better for everybody. So that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Carl Irving. Irving. Carl not here? Okay. Well, that concludes everyone that has signed up. I'd like to give anyone else a chance. If, if you didn't get signed up, I'd like to say a few words. You're welcome to step forward.
I don't really want to talk because I, I'm not really good at it. But we came after you guys got the, the paper, and we would like our name on there stating we would agree to the more restrictive. My name is Terry Wooton. I live at 606 Hill Road South in Melba. My husband
Hold on.
Chairman Commissioners, we have an extra sign in sheet that Ms. Wooton can fill out, and we'll have that for the record. So.
Okay. Anyone else wish to sign up for the record or speak? Because we want this, we want to make sure everyone enters in this, has had a chance to say a few words.
A member of the community left a comment that they had to leave early. Can I submit this to the record?
You could give that to Leon for the record, yes. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'd like to speak.
Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Josh Cook, and I reside at 6712 Stagecoach Road, Namp.
Josh what?
Cook.
Okay, good, okay.
Yeah, Josh Cook. Okay, so I'm a adjacent landowner to the proposed project that got previously denied. I am also a witness of being bribed. And it's obvious that the people that was in this room that spoke in favor of the project, or in favor to make the ordinance more solar friendly, is getting bribed and incensed.
I wish you wouldn't talk that way. We, I, I stated at the beginning, we're not going to take anybody making disparaging comments about another person. So please don't do that.
Okay. Well, I support what Planning and Zoning has said. And y'all have got to do what the farmer said, put sideboards on this somehow. Because if you leave it open ended, Savion or another solar company is just going to come in here and say, well, now that's not prime ground because of this. They're looking for a loophole. They're trying to wear us out. As some of your constituents has already said. So I'm in favor of Planning and Zoning's ordinance recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Okay. I think that's about it. Would you like to wrap it up a little bit?
Yeah, Chairman Commissioners, thank you. I would, I would like to do that. First off, just like to thank everyone who attended. And this has been a long process, and we've had a lot of great conversations with people on all sides of these issues. And me and my staff, you know, we've worked hard to try to capture what we can. And maybe the fact that nobody's happy in this room is some sign that we got close to it. I don't know. But I did have a chance to find the Idaho Fish and Game recommended language change, and I just wanted to pull it up because I feel bad. They, they wanted that shared, and I did want to be able to share that with you. So give me just a second, hopefully if technology is on my side tonight. All right. So, wow, it doesn't want to show up. All right, hold on. There's something going on here. I'll, let me just zoom in on this. Maybe that's, maybe it was there all along. It was just hiding. So, so to the point of the language shared by IDFG, if we're going to consider restricting on types of farmland, it was their hope that you would also consider rangeland and fish and wildlife habitat of statewide and or local importance. So just, that, that was the specific language they were suggesting. And, and I, I don't know if I actually captured that very well when I tried to share that before. You know, Commissioners, it is always your option for any portion of this ordinance, and staffs shared this with you in the past, that if there's a piece you think needs worked on, it can always be removed and set aside, and we can go with the code that's in place today to, you know, to continue to operate with that, and we can put more time into other things. So please, please keep that option in mind as you consider this. And yeah, again, just want to thank everyone for all the hard work and effort on this. And, and I don't know if you want to ask me any more questions, but I'm happy to try to answer them if you do. So.
I don't think we, we have, I don't have any more questions, but this has certainly been a, an interesting evening, to say the least. I appreciate all the comments and all the interest in this issue. And we're, we are not going to make a decision tonight, at least it's my, my opinion, but we will close the record.
I'll add all of the exhibits that were shared here tonight. I also have an email from the State Idaho Soil Scientist that I referenced earlier in the conversation that I will include, just the explanation of federal versus state and how all those things are determined. But I think the gentleman here, who is an actual soil scientist, kind of did a good job of explaining how that interacts and works as well. But all those things submitted tonight, as well as my presentation, will be exhibited to the record. So.
Leon, did Fish and Game provide a map of what they consider critical land?
Chairman Commissioners, they did not include a map. You know, they've, they've, there is some mapping available of where large, where animal surveys have been conducted in the past. But with the slides they shared with me, those, those were not included. There was a letter as well that I'll make part of the record, but I don't believe there's any map that was included in that. So.
So is there any other documents needed to add to the record?
Chairman Commissioners, I think we have them all.
Okay, Commissioner Daley, you have something?
My question was in relation to what Commissioner Davidson said in terms of fish and wild lives, or Fish and Game, I guess. It was State Fish and Game, wasn't just Fish and Wildlife, was it?
It's the Idaho Department of Fish and Game that commented.
So it was Fish and Game. Did they give anything beyond this simple statement here in relation to wildlife corridors or anything like that?
Yeah, Chairman Commissioners, I, I don't believe so. I have included everything they've thrown into the record. I don't recall seeing a map of anything like that. They are considering the designation of local importance, similar to what farmland would be, which would have to be something that you guys decide. All right, this is rangeland, fish and wildlife habitat of statewide and or local importance. So that would be an interactive discussion with IDFG to identify those areas and have you officially recognize them. But yeah, there's no, there's no set aside area right now.
Endless hearings to debate what is and what isn't critical.
Essentially, yeah. Yeah. So.
Go ahead.
A follow up, like sage grouse or any of those kinds of things. They didn't comment on any of that.
Yeah, it was, I mean, they identified that there are, particularly in the area south of town, where we've seen a lot of solar development, there's 350 plus species there that they're keeping an eye on and are interested in conserving. They talked about large game, elk, pronghorn, things like that. But
Nothing specific.
Nothing specific.
Thanks.
All right. You've added everything that needs to be added to the record so we can close the record?
I believe so, yes. Thanks.
Okay, with that, I'll close the hearing on the application 2024-02581ZOA, Ada County Development Services hearing being closed. I made my recommendation. I think we should, we've got a lot to digest here. And I think we should give it a little more time. But we have closed the public hearing, and we've, we've taken a, a lot of input, and we have a lot to digest. Is there any recommendation from the, one of the Commissioners?
I, I would, I would support, I would support that, Mr. Chairman, as well. There's so much that we already have, and in the comments tonight, I think we should take sufficient time to consider them before we have our deliberations.
I would agree.
Is there a motion pending?
Do we have a date certain that we want to put it to?
We can do a date certain, or we can date, we can just table it subject to the call of the chair. It depends on what you want.
That would be my preference, that without a date certain, so that we have, we do have enough time, and we can take the time. Is that a possible?
Chairman Commissioners, I think that gets complicated from a noticing standpoint if we don't have a date certain.
How much notice do you need?
Well, we would have to follow lupa. So this would
That's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah.
In this case, you identify a date, that is a notice. That's what everybody unnoticed. That's when you're going to take up the matter again.
Right.
If you didn't want to go that route, we would have to, we would do a public service announcement. We would do two, I guess for this one, two legal notices. I'm trying to recall what we've done with the ZOA here. So.
Unless we schedule the time right now, you mean?
Yes. So if you identify a date right now. So in August, we have the 13th is your next scheduled public hearing meeting. We also have August 27th as a backup public hearing date. And then as we get into September, it would be the 10th is the first public hearing date for, I believe it's the 10th. Someone pull up a calendar for me. Yeah.
Well, we don't actually need a public hearing date if we want, if we chose, correct? We could do it at
Chairman Commissioners, you've closed the record. You could use an open business meeting to make that decision if you wanted to.
Or any, or any other meeting that we publicly schedule.
We could pick a date, just pick a date.
And you could pick any date you want, and we would just, that would be the official date that we picked tonight. So, yeah.
If you get to that date and you need more time, you can table it.
Yeah. Well, let me look at the calendar here then. Unless, unless somebody has a specific time, because I think we need, we, one, we've, we've got a pretty heavy duty schedule anyway, but, but we need to, I would think latter part of August, sometime first part of September would be my preference.
That would be the earliest. And, and again, like the director said, we could table it again if we didn't feel we had had enough time.
Yeah, that's correct. We could, we could do that. I would say.
But I would say into September, I would say into September.
August 27th is the backup date. And there are, it's not scheduled for anything right now, so this would be the standalone item.
Well, we could do that, or we could do August 28th in our, in our hearing room. I'd schedule, I think we could schedule, we could table this till the 28th of August in our, in our hearing room.
Actually, I'm going to be out of town on
Oh, you are?
Yeah.
Well, then we can't do that. Okay. Well, we could, we could schedule 27th, but, but I don't think we need to do it in a
Or later.
I, I would prefer later, myself.
Okay, say, give us a date.
September 10th, you said?
That is the next public hearing. It is, there are, I'm sorry, Richard, there are other items that would be on that agenda. But again, this would be unfinished business. It's usually the first thing taken up. It comes down to how long you're going to need to deliberate at that public hearing and make your decision.
Well, just give me a motion.
I, I moved that we table this until, till September 10th.
Second. I'm moving second to table, to table this application until September 10th.
6:00 PM, right here, public hearing time. And at that date, we will, but it's clear
the record is closed.
Yes. No more written testimony, no more verbal testimony. It's just your deliberation and decision.
To make it clear for the public, between now and then, there's no more public hearing testimony or anything that can be sent in.
We are, we've taken all the testimony on this item now.
Or emails or anything like
Yeah, no more emails, no more faxes, no more, yep.
Okay, well, with that, the motion is to, to table this application, 2024-02581ZOA, Ada County Development Services, to 6:00 PM on September 10th. Is that correct? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. So, is there any other business we need before we adjourn?
That is it. Commissioners, thank you.
We will be adjourned.
Thank you.